Thank you for attending, please, our stand-up pledge. A pledge, regions?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which they are the nation under God, in whose name we pray.
Thank you. Happy February to all and welcome to the North Babylon School Board Association Plenary Meeting Budget Meeting Discussion for February 1st. Fire exits in the back and on the sides if we have an emergency, we'll let you know. Also due to COVID regulations, please try and sit socially distant from people that do not currently live in your household. Thank you all. So we're just gonna start the meeting with right into the superintendent's presentation of budget. Great, thank you.
So tonight's presentation is the beginning of several presentations regarding the upcoming 2223 school year budget. We go through several stages in the budget creation and for tonight, you're gonna see that we're gonna do an overview. We're gonna talk about our state aid, our tax cap, and where our reserves are at. So in tonight's agenda, we'll talk about the budget process and enhancements and improvements that we've been making to our budget process. We're gonna discuss the estimated revenue and use of financial resources. We're gonna talk about our tax cap. We're gonna give you a brief state aid analysis, a reserves and fund balance analysis, a 2122 operating budget summary, a short bond update, and then we'll have opportunity for questions. So in order to improve our budget process, we've been doing a lot of things differently moving forward. So we're continuing with the use of account code upgrades to improve transparency. So what that means is we're trying to get more specific with our budgeting codes. So they directly align to purchases instead of larger codes that have many purchases in them. We're using account codes at a more granular level. So it improves our budget detail. It tells us more about what we're spending exactly on and it helps us to prepare for the next year. We're increasing accountability for stakeholders, so budget owners have grown from 25 to 30 people. What that means is that there are now 30 people administrators in the district who now have access and control of their own budget codes and are responsible for the expenditures within those codes, making sure they align to the budget that's given to them and that they submitted and that if there's any issue or concern regarding an expense that they haven't budgeted for, they would have to go through Frank. Establish long-term financial plans to help us identify future areas of concern. So we've looked at and we've spoken about transportation being an expense that we have concern about. Our contract ran out, our outside contract was about a 20% increase. So that's something we have to pay attention to. We have to, we've been dissecting our salary and payroll codes so that we can see where each the money is being spent in those payroll codes. And we're looking at expense-related expenses related to athletics forecast by activity and location. So that would be officials exactly, transportation to and from, postseason play, and really getting granular with some of that work in the budget process. So I'm gonna turn it over to Frank when it gets to all the numbers here, so I'm gonna turn over here and you can pick up from here.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you. And this slide here should look familiar to everybody. I presented it last year at every budget meeting and I'm gonna do the same thing this year. If there's one slide, if I only had to do one for the entire season, it would be this because it represents everything from a high level. So there's three distinct sections for a reason. The first is the revenue. So each item I'm gonna go through in a little more detail in the next few slides. But you see the top one is kind of the headline number, it's your property taxes, right? So all the way on the right, you see the percentage change, that's 2.37. That's North Babylon's property tax cap this year under the calculation. That brings us to a $70.6 million property tax. State aid, 6.5%. So there's been a lot in the news about increased state aid. We did benefit from that quite a bit. So you see there that that's a big increase and it brings us to just under $54 million. And then our local revenue is down a little bit. It looks high on a percentage basis, 7%, but it's just off a lower base. So it's about $100,000. And then you see the bottom, total revenue number, 3.96, so just under 4% increase, which is very good. The next section is financial resources. So what that is, is it's your savings. That's our, when you hear fund balance, when you hear reserves, that's this section. It's not money coming in, it's money we already have. And here we're budgeting for just under $4 million. That brings 3.8, a slight tick up from last year and I'll explain why as we get further in the presentation. And then that brings you to the last line, which is your, that total revenue, financial resources, the sum of those two, that is your expenditure budget. So that's what people would report when you see the total expenditure. So that is just about 4% as well, 3.98% and that's just under $130 million. So you see that the total revenue and the total financial resource and revenue, that line is very close for a reason. It was the same last year. We wanna try to keep the revenue in line with the expenditure budget. On a percentage basis.
Is it 3.8 or 4.8?
I'm sorry, Dan?
Is it 3.8?
No, 3.90, sorry. The total expenditure budget is going up 3.98% and then the total revenue is going up 3.96%. Okay?
The use of reserves went up by 4.84%.
Okay.
Our reserve use went up by 4.8. Alright, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. If there's any other questions, I know there's a lot of numbers. So if there's questions when I'm going through it, just shout them out and I'll answer as we go through. So property tax cap, so here's a little bit of a breakdown of it. It's always stated 2% tax cap. We know that there are exclusions. So this year we do have exclusion, so that's why we're over 2%, we're at 2.37. So you see the top number, it's what we had last year, $69 million tax cap. Our allowable growth factor this year is 2%. You see the asterix, it's there for a reason. If you look at the bottom, the CPI is actually 4.7. So that's what New York State is calculating as the CPI. The latest number from the Bureau of Labor Statistics is 7%. And it's not looking like it's really slowing. So the fact that we're at 2% versus 4.747 puts a lot of strain on the budget, which we'll talk about. But that brings us this year, total maximum allowable levy is 2.37, which we just discussed. The next slide is a little bit of a breakdown of state aid. So again, a few sections. The top section, I wanted to show you this current year, 2122. So all the numbers you see are using the governor's most recent budget. You'll see our total aid we reported, they reported that we're gonna get is a 51.5. Anytime you see a state aid number, you would want to back out universal prepay because that gets recorded in the special aid fund. So our adjusted total is 50, 876038. How that compares to what we budgeted last year at this time, what we thought we were gonna get is down at the bottom. So you see in the third section, it says 2122 budgeted revenue, it's 5522365. So the percent is that blue box underneath. So you see, we're just under 1%. We're getting just under 1% more. So kind of right in line what we thought we were gonna get. Now the second box, that's the governor's state aid budget for 2223. So it's 53212078, that's what they report. We back out UPK and then in this, we're also adding money that's not in there. So that 1.249361, that represents money that we anticipate we're gonna get because we're gonna finish the bond phases and file final cost reports. So that is phase three, which we filed in December. Phase 3A and four, which will be filed in December of 2022. And all that money we should be receiving in 2223. So you'll see there that total number is 5379174. And how that compares is the green and the yellow boxes below. So it's 6.5%. You saw that number on the main screen, first page. That's about 3.2 million more than what we budgeted last year and it's about 2.9 million that we're actually receiving this year, which is about almost close to 6% more.
I just wanted to make comments about budgeted state aid and actual for this current school year and why there's a difference of 353,000. So when we budget our state aid, we are making some assumptions on expense-driven aid. So that means that we're expecting to have certain expenditures that will drive aid. And so when we calculated, we calculate conservatively and then therefore we had other expense-driven aids and other aid came in, which gave us 353,000 more than we expected in our budget when we do our budget estimation. Because we literally, by doing this starting in February, half the school year is over. So we're making some, you know, very educated assumptions on our budget and what's going to be spent moving forward. But if you had a special education placement that happened between now and then, you would have an expense, but you would have aid driven on the other side. So you would see an increase in aid if a placement occurred between now and the end of the school year. So there's certain things that could change that aid number.
Right.
Correct.
Right. Just one question. You said on the building aid that we're adding in. We're gonna get phase three, you said we're gonna get phase 3A?
Yeah, so, no, so we're gonna get phase three, we just filed in December. These numbers are pulled off the November database, so that's not, so we're adding that and then 3A and four are also finishing, so those will be filed in December of 2022. So we'll get those in the back half of 2023, in the first half of 2023, so that's included in this year. Yeah. The next slide here, so this is looking at that bottom section of the first slide. It shows, so it's our reserves and fund balance, the total is your total fund balance. So it's a snapshot over time, so you can see, it's more, most important to really look at the bottom. I put the each reserve just so you can see. But the important part is the total fund balance and the percent of the budget. So I think a good target to be at is around 20%. You see, we're right there, we're ranging from 21 to a low of 18. And our total fund balance we ended with is we're just over $26 million. On last year's budget was just about $125 million, so it's up 21%. How we think about funding the reserves, the one, most of them are pretty well-funded except for the teachers' retirement system reserve. So you can see there that that was zero, that's the third one down, 00920, 1.8 million. And then you're gonna see that pretty much at that same ratio tick up because we can only put in 2% a year of the prior year salaries. It's capped, it's the only reserve that's really capped and it's capped at 10% of the total expense. So you'll see that tick up for a few years until we hit that 10% and then it'll kind of stay stable. The rest of our reserves are all well-funded, in good shape, and they're there if and when we need them.
What's that 3 million jump on unassigned from 1920 to 2021?
Yep, that's, so that's the 4% rule, so that's, unassigned you can use pretty much for anything, right? So when the pandemic happened, there was a lot of concern about state aid. So we made the decision to go from 4% to 5%, which usually you wouldn't do. So that's why you see that big jump and you see it coming back down and get to the 4% limit that you're supposed to be at.
The workers' compensation, that's a little question.
Yeah, Dan, that's a good question. So workers' comp, with the surplus that we had, decided to fund that more because we've seen rising workers' comp. And you'll see when we got, something I mentioned last year, we saw that the incidents started to tick up. You could see it clearly and now this year we're starting to see the expenses to that. So we're budgeting for when we get to that part of the expense, we're not doing it tonight, but when we get to that part, you'll see that budget's cost is going up. So we're seeing it this year and we're expecting it next year. So that's why at the end of the year, when we do have a surplus of funds, we can decide where to put that money and that's why that one went up. Okay, so 2122 operating summary, so I separated this kind of into two sections. You know, headwinds and tailwinds, alright? So riding your bike into the, into the headwinds is bad, right? With the wind behind your back is good. What we have going on this year is highlighted with transportation, so that's been the biggest factor. We signed a new transportation contract and the rates are significantly higher, unexpectedly higher. So when we were budgeting, I budgeted for quite, for a significant increase, but I wasn't expecting. You can see here, we have about a 90% increase in the rate. So I gave you actual examples of a four-hour bus with a driver assistant. That's like kind of the most common that we use. And you can see our old contract, 1920, it was about $60,000 a year. The new contract, it's $117,000. So it's a 57,000 increase per route, which is 94%, which is not expected. And we have, we have about 50, we have just over 50 of these routes. So you're talking, you know, over $2 million. So it's a lot of money. And it's a factor of the fact that we had a significantly different transportation contract in the past than we do now and costs have gone up. Our old contract was post-COVID and we signed a contract at the wrong time. There was no, you know, there's nothing we could do, the other contract they wouldn't renew. But it was a very old contract and you see it jump up to market levels. And then compounding that, you see the second point is we've continued to struggle attracting and retaining bus drivers' NDAs. So we have higher contract transportation at a time where we need contract transportation more, which is creating even more of a problem. Our debt service is up 18% year over year. However, that was planned expenditures, I put that in currency. So you can see a lot of the reason why we have increased state aid is because we are doing more capital spending with our bonds, so we're getting aid in, but our debt service is also going up. So it's a, it's about a million dollar increase last year to this year in the budget. So a million of that state aid is really for debt service. And then the last is the inflation. So inflation is causing, I don't think I have to tell people that because you probably feel it yourselves. You can see energy prices are up about double, food prices are up, everything's up and we're not immune to that just because we're a nonprofit. You know, it hits us even harder. Our health insurance, the family plan went up 13% this year and just something as simple as garbage, a removal, it's the same thing. We signed a new contract and it's 64% higher than the last contract and it's because we were on an old, old contract that they finally wised up to and now we're back being brought up to state contract levels and it's a significant increase. Now the good news revolves around revenue, right? So we're getting a good amount of state aid. So our foundation aid went up 8%. We should expect healthy foundation aid increases over the next two years at least. And our total state aid went up 6.5%, so that's really nice. We also have the federal stimulus, we went over, so that's an additional $12 million. So we are getting a lot of money in, but a lot of that money in is also, you know, there's a lot of money sloshing around, which is also creating inflation, we also have costs going up, so.
Frank, just on the buses, the four-hour buses?
Yep.
What is the cost in-house?
Uh, so a fraction of that, I mean, a four-hour, it would, it would cost, you know, it would cost a driver...
How much money is it?
Yeah, I mean, so maybe half of that, maybe not even, you know, because you figure if you, say you had, not even, because you'd have that driver doing more, say you only had the driver for some reason doing that, you pay the salary of the driver and the bus, I mean, the buses, it's a minibus like that, it's probably $60,000 for the bus and then you're talking for the time, it's probably $25,000 a year. You know, so the cost, if you, you know, depreciate that cost on top of the cost of the driver, say it's, I don't know, 30, 40,000, it's a fraction of the 117 we pay him, way less than half. I usually think it's probably about a quarter. So it's probably somewhere 25,000 to 35,000 in-house.
Frank, I have a couple of questions. As far as the salaries that are in 1920 to present and, you know, the larger spending that we, that we use.
Yep.
Can I assume that there's been a jump in the salary or...
Yeah, so the contractors have been paying more. You could see, you probably get them in the Penny Saver and the South Bay, all those, almost always you'll see the adds. And they're pretty smart, so the contractors are not stupid. And I think they know that a lot of the transportation has to be done and I think that they know that the cost has to be passed on. So yeah, you see it, they're ratcheting up their, what they're paying for drivers, they're giving sign-on bonuses, some health insurance. So they're stealing the drivers and we need transportation, so we're paying for that. And I think they kind of know that, so yeah, they're quick to ratchet up their salaries. But I think it's more so that we were on, our old contract was only a shared service with educational. So I think we always had enough drivers to do kind of everything in-house and we kind of had some, you know, if you had a student going far away, we would put them on the bus with the contract, so it was really favorable. Now we're not in that position, so we need a full contract, transportation contract. We have large buses, small buses, so we no longer have that. And that's why it's a big difference because we're getting the rate as if we depend on that versus like, yes, we have a bus going there already, you can stick a kid on a bus. That was the old contract versus the new one.
We were saying, maybe we should hook into, maybe we add it.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, the next, the next budget presentation is on the expense side. I'm gonna do a full, a separate total transportation contract because I've been working with Al a lot and we have every route, every cost, like everything completely broken down. So we're gonna do a full presentation on exactly the state of transportation so you can see and kind of think about those decisions.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for years and the costs have been going up internally. We tried to keep it here, you know, and it seems like every year, you know, we keep seeing, if we went back in the, you know, Glenn's shaking his head over there. From the day he came here, it's been that rising cost. You know, trying to figure out whether we contract out or bring in-house. We always try and bring in-house, but it seems like every year more and more is going out as well, so with the different challenges, of course.
Right, yeah, and we had probably, talking, I wasn't here at the time, but talking to Al and Dee, we had over 100 drivers not too long ago. And you can clearly, it's like an inverse chart. You'll see the in-house drivers go down and you see the cost per, you know, student route, whatever metric you want to use, going up, like inversely to that. We're down to fifth, we're in the 50s now, I mean, depending on who's on, who's off payroll, but we're in the 50s now. See, we lost about half the drivers. We have enough buses.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we doing a fleet analysis too, you know, where we're at age-wise, bus-wise?
Yeah, we, we, we're okay on the equipment side and we actually, we use the federal stimulus money to purchase some more buses. So our buses are in good shape, it's more the driver and the DA side, we need both.
You were on the board then at the time, we were looking at really like a five bus replacement plan and then we hit some, we had a negative tax cap one year, remember it was negative point something?
Yep.
And we kind of put it to the side and we haven't looked at buses since then. But we did put buses in the federal stimulus fund because we don't have to borrow and it's not on a lease. We can, because we do still have the need of a replacement plan. We do have more buses that are usable than we do drivers. And I think the analysis that Al and Frank will show you guys will help us because I would love, as you, I believe, all of you would want to increase an in-house transportation department. That's my belief system that I would recommend to you guys. That the issue becomes affording what we need to do to attract quality, just like Frank was saying, and ensuring that the outside part decreases so that there's a budgetary agnostic exchange. Because what happens is that if we can't go and reduce two, three, four buses or whatever from there, then we can't, we did one-on-one side and not fixed on the other and it increases our budget. So it's timing, it's when we can do it and how we can do it. But I think, you know, I meet with Dee, who is the shop steward, monthly for transportation. We have a lot of conversations and it really comes down to, her and I have evaluated other transportation contracts, you know, this signing bonus that they were giving and the salaries were $2, $3, $4, $5 more an hour than our top salary to go in to walk in the door because they knew they had so many districts waiting to bid out these contracts. So they took all the workforce with them. Now we offer the training, you know, Al does the driver training, we have somebody who does the road work or whatever, like we have that ability to do here, so in-house training. But it's really finding contracts, salaries, and benefits that will lure people here instead of to educational Suffolk and those other transportation companies.
Yeah, I've talked about that, I don't know, how many years.
And our drivers are very dedicated and love the work here and they're great people. So you know that I'm in favor of trying to figure something out there as well. So I'm looking forward to that presentation, the detailed presentation on transportation.
Right, so the last slide I have is a bond update. I think I touched actually a little bit on this during the presentation, but a recap. So phase one obviously is done, it's been done for a while, we are receiving aid on that. We came in just over budget on that, about $100,000. Phase two was completed as well, we're getting aid on that. That came in well under budget, so close to a million under, 900,000 under. Phase three is what we just wrapped up this past year in December. Actually, I received notification today that the state received the final cost report, so we will be getting aid on that and that's done. Phase 3A and four are the two that are kind of in ongoing construction. 3A, the big project there is the generator and interior doors. There were some delays with that, both getting the contracts signed and just the lag on getting the product in. We still don't have the generators in. So they, they should be here this month, so we should be on target to get those done by December. And phase four, obviously, we know the big holdup there is auditorium and then there's some checklist items, but that'll be done on time as well. So the phases that we have moving forward, we're in the process of the design and sending things up to the state for 4A and then we have the remainder, you know, set for the next three years, 5, 5A, and six. We're essentially one-third of the way in the, are in the books, one-third is ongoing and we have one-third to go. This is where we are with the bond. In all, we're slightly under budget. I think if you were to add that up, probably 600, 700,000 under budget. So we're right where we need to be and trying to move forward the fastest we can, but also making sure the quality is good. But I think that's the last slide I have, so is any questions on any of the slides?
Bob? No, I just got you down there, I asked up here.
Okay, you have a question, sorry, yeah. Are we gonna see in one of the presentations, one of the things we talked about bringing in bond was making sure that we pay off the bond when the aid ends and how we're gonna make sure those payments are done? Are we gonna see something like that in this project presentation?
Yeah, so Glenn asked, I'm gonna put, we do have another presentation, we'll put the tax rate. So we'll put the tax rate, Glenn asked if we could put the tax rate for the bond, we'll put that. I can also put, I think, I think we were talking about like a slide.
It's that debt service.
A debt service law, I can put that out there. That, I can tell you now that it's been, it's been stable. So when I talked about the debt service going up a million dollars, our aid is also going up to 1.2 million dollars. So we've been matching it so far and yeah, that's all, I'll stick up on more details. And I think one of the reasons Bob asked is because there was a year, and I think it may be two years ago because I remember being in the firehouse, where we paid less than the aid that came in. And we were saying to ourselves, we have to play a little catch-up because we don't ever want to end where we want to pay off in the year that the aid stopped so that the following year we don't have a payment with no aid coming in. So there was one year where we need, and I'm trying to recall the conversation, if anybody could close it specifically, that...
That's when the one fell off, right?
Yeah, one fell off and we had that year and then we wanted to make sure after that one year hit like that, that that didn't happen again and we discussed, it may have been our first payment on the new one was slightly lower than what we wanted it to be. So we will have that whole debt service chart that we have from there and what it equals, remember, we've always talked about how much of the bond is the tax rate? Because remember, we talked to the community about this $18 range per month for the bond to be maxing out. So Frank and I have been making sure that the projects, when you see them split out in this 9.8 million kind of range, that keeps that consistent so that it never goes over that amount per household, the average household, a month, just like when we presented.
Right, yeah, and I think...
And this last aid on the end, right?
Yes. Yes.
On the last phase.
Yeah, and.
You may be there for several years, right? So like you have some, because we have earlier debt, you're gonna see, he'll have all the debt that we have. As some falls off when we take new one, it keeps this number like fluctuating, but it never goes over that eighteen. Because that eighteen was just for that project. So there's some other debt services we have that could make that more than eighteen, but we never will exceed the eighteen on the single project.
Okay.
And then, have we?
I'm sorry. As far as expenses related to athletics, my question is, this year and last year, we've had coaches that have gone down because of COVID and they were out for weeks. Or is this the time where we think about adding a line for additional support in that realm? As far as including additional coaches that could be.
So that'll be in Kim's presentation when she does her her department's, the athletics. So that's a great thing to talk about when you see what we're, you can even speak to Jason ahead of time. But that would really be in the curriculum and development that athletics falls in there.
An additional line maybe.
So Kim can speak to Jason, you can bring it up when she does her presentation, so we have information for you.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, Jason, because Jason actually, he's been great with the budget this year. Like we really drove hard into into athletics. So he has every single sport, every single coach where he wants to practice. So he really developed that a lot this year.
And in that presentation, if we wanted to discuss additional teams, that's when that would come up?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, exactly. Because Jason actually did propose.
Yeah, so there's some proposals that you may see in there already or maybe some things you want to talk about. I also want to say that when you see the state aid in revenue and you see the tax cap, remember you guys set the tax cap. What Frank did for the purposes of this presentation is show me what our tax cap is and what that budget and our budget, that our draft budget's going to equate. That's what we equated our budget to. And you'll see what's in and what wasn't able to be in. Or there have been years that the board has said to us, please lower the cap by, we don't want to go out more than X and we want you to do Y and Z. Sometimes we added some money from the reserves. Sometimes we shifted where money was coming from to different areas. So know that everything from here on in will really be you guys looking at our recommended draft budget and your input on each item, suggestions, questions, and then we create as we go along to land in a place where it has the things in there that the board is looking for with the community and the people you represent and that the community can afford what we're putting out for vote.
Thank you. Your fingers crossed because this is all based on the governor's budget, but the legislative budget sometimes comes in higher. So there's always the opportunity for more state aid, actually, once the legislative budget comes out in April. We had it happen last year and it would really turn the whole budget. The budget was a lot, a lot tighter at the beginning, so there's also that, so. Thank you, Frank, appreciate that. There'll be some time for questions later on. Right now, we're gonna move into more discussion topics. We have two of them tonight, one on the opening plan and one strengthening middle school and high school support systems. We want to start with the opening plan as we continue to review that. Last meeting we said, last business meeting, we said we'd discuss it at the end of January to see where we're at with infection rate, what else is going on there in the district, in other districts on Long Island, wherever we want to discuss that. So we're gonna look at some things, take some recommendations from administration and discuss them, I guess, if there's no one who'd go ahead.
Yeah, so I know, I wasn't here that meeting, but I know you guys had great conversation regarding our opening plan, where we were at, some of the recommendations, because we were at a very high level of infection rate at that time. So we kind of brought in our regulations. You know, our reported infection rates in the schools has been very low over the past several days and couple of weeks, very low. There's a different kind of reporting system at this point because of the use of over counter tests, the five days. You're kind of more reporting when your your child or when the employee would return to school or work through that questionnaire. So we get a lot less phone calls, am I correct, Ms. Butler, regarding positive? We get more a form filled out with a return date. But when you look, our infection rate at this point, you know, like reported today, there were no cases and reported to us. And that's kind of where we're at is, and I think, I don't have the longitudinal data here, but I know I've been checking, it's been very low. So I think we're really moving into a good spot and that we can look at some of those things. You know, I think last time we spoke about PTA was going to be virtual with the principal and we talked about maybe adults were coming in the building, but no students with the adults in PTA events. So I think that as things continue to keep getting better, I think you we can look at going back to some of those things that the board was speaking about regarding events in the school with the parent and the student and things of that nature. So I didn't have a direct conversation with the principals between yesterday and today, but I can. And I think that, you know, we can start moving towards again, towards a more opening of events and things for our students and for our parents.
Anything specific, guys, you want to talk about? I know we said PTA meetings being opened up again, just there was a little confusion in different buildings we mentioned, that we heard. So if that could be opened up, at least we can make that decision now. I don't know if you want to, if you want to wait on that. You know, passing meetings, all those type things where they can meet in the school.
Adult meeting, meetings.
Some are still meeting virtually, which that's comfortable and they feel comfortable doing that, they can continue that as well. But we just want to have the buildings available for now.
Yeah.
I'm on the website, I'm just trying to pull it up.
Yeah.
The, it was a four-page document.
Yep, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Okay, is it possible to tell me where you navigate to get that?
Yeah, so on the main page of the website, if you go to opening our schools twenty-one, twenty-two, click that and then go to opening our schools detailed information. That should open that four-page document. I'm kind of going through it as you are. So one of the things, Matt, I see right here, PTA-sponsored school events, and it says suspended through one thirty-one, twenty-two.
I think you can let the, let's add, absolutely. Yeah, PTA-sponsored school events.
So the evening events with PTA-sponsored evening events, you want to look at allowing those events in the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which, which, we.
So go to the main tab that says opening our schools and then go to the fourth bullet that says detailed information, that's the one I'm looking at. I can't, I'm not gonna write anything because I'll change it for the entire link, because that's where Matt. So if you guys just make sure you take notes on these recommended changes so that we can go back and fix it.
Also, there could be stuff, I'm sorry, I was going to, I know the conversation came up for the possible field trips. So we'll get that as well.
Yeah, we have, yes, field trips, so we're still good with that. So it just says following the New York State Department out. So what that means is you're masked on the bus and whatever they're doing there at that site, you go visit, you just follow their rules.
What are the principals' feelings about having visitors class parents?
See, I haven't had a chance to speak to them since that point, since the meeting you guys had. I can speak to them and get their input, but I don't want to answer to them because I haven't had a detailed conversation with them about that.
Is it possible to find out for our meeting?
For the seventeen, yeah, absolutely. If there's a list of things that I can go and meet with them with, then I'll do that and have all the information for the seventeen. But some of the things we can change ourselves, but I'll go through and make sure I have the the other information.
Yeah, I mean, I think just having the PTA and.
So we'll start with that and then we'll talk about the events in the school. Like remember, we talked about the one parent could come and class parents, we talked about. So I'll have a conversation with all the principals and then come back and be ready for the seventeen.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Anything else with the opening plan, guys? Do you want to do a real quick thing on, I mean, again, the masks of the masks, guys? It's been, you know, out there. It was a one day of nervousness amongst the world of what happened. But we moved forward, we passed that now, we're in a situation, we're just in a holding pattern as of now until the governor makes, you know, her next decision, right? So we'll take it from there. But we're gonna continue to follow the rules that we have been, which has been, you know.
It's extended out to March third, I think.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I think March third, so it just came out.
Yeah.
That extended to March third.
Okay.
And then it'll be reevaluated at that time.
Okay, that's news to me, so.
Okay, so it came today and I'll get you guys the documents. That came out today.
All right, perfect. So the only things we were discussing, obviously strengthening middle school and high school support systems. So there's some, you know, some concern and some, you know, discussions we had. We had an executive session yesterday to talk about some specifics, obviously, we can't talk about here. But some wonderful things came out of that meeting yesterday. We had asked Glenn to get with his administrative team and come up with, you know, a now and short-term and long-term goal to, you know, continue to strengthening our support for the students, obviously, a lot of support is needed. And I just want to see what Glenn has said.
So I have a handout for you guys and I'll say that a leadership team met today, the building principals and central office. And today's time was spent on immediate actionable invisible changes that can occur within the next day or two and then coming back and setting midterm and long-term plans to enhance and improve school climate and culture, which really brings in those physical altercations, the acts of violence we've been seeing our kids display in our hallways that, you know, have been really concerning to all of us regarding that behavior. So when we met today, I'm gonna give you guys a sheet here. This is an action plan that would be for our immediate actionable visible changes that we can do over the next two to three days of school to put directly in place. We worked on this collaboratively today with the building principals. We then will work with their assistant principals. So if you'll notice that this is for both buildings, this plan. And the evidence of needing this is because we have seen physical altercations in our hallways. And we've seen that increase, we saw, we have seen that. And we have reported feelings of concern from students, from parents. Those are two of the things that have driven us to really pay attention to this. If you look, we're gonna measure our success by decreasing the amount of physical altercations. We're gonna try to get reports from students and parents about how they feel about their kids being safe in school, how they feel in school. And as that increases of feeling more safe and less concerned, that's evidence of progress. And the same for the staff, a staff report of their learned, their environment, their work environment and a feeling of safety. So some of the things that we spoke about today that are immediate actionable visible changes are, one, formalizing our hallway presence, so having administration, deans, teachers and PPS staff in the hallways to increase supervision during the change of classes. So we have specific plans for each building, but it's an immediate change where, starting tomorrow, after we meet and we start, and there's some faculty meetings next week, you see a date here, completion two, three, is because our assistant principals, our principals and deans can be in the hallways immediately. They're gonna talk about placement, where are the spots that we need more supervision? And also, central office will be a part of that, you know, being a part hand-in-hand with the buildings. And you'll see that the data we collect will be ensuring that everyone's at their post and at their assigned post during this time when we put more people out there. Our second strategy is more visible security presence in the building and reconfigure the schedule to optimize security staff. So we have been able to secure two additional security guards per building, starting tomorrow. We also evaluated the schedule of the current security guards and some have posts, some are more covering areas. So the building principals are gonna come up with, Joe Verline, a schedule of posts, times and coverages, roles and responsibilities, and we're adding two additional security guards to each building, starting tomorrow. So if you'll see here, you know, the team members, Joe's one of our team members, we're gonna be working with, adding additional security guards, looking at the security schedule. And when I say schedule, it's sometimes a security guard's schedule starts at six AM and we may move that to six forty-five so that there's forty-five more minutes on the end of the day when kids are in. And then using certain entrances so that teachers can enter the building early and have an entrance, but that the security guard is in the building for a longer period of time. Having more security guards on posts throughout the building will be our evidence and we talked about starting that tomorrow. Our third one is that we're gonna be having a faculty meeting so that we can review with the teachers the behavioral expectations of students and hallway supervision. So the administrators, if you'll see under, in that meeting, in the next strategy, is about us providing to the teachers a script or a lesson plan for them to use with students in the room so that there's a consistent and clear message to every student in each building. And that will be created for teachers, we'll review with them at a faculty meeting, it'll be done in every classroom and those expectations will be reviewed. And our evidence that they're understanding and learning what our expectations are will be by asking them. Do you recall going over these? Can you tell me a few things about what our expectations are of you in the school building? And that's an immediate action where we say the eighteenth because the faculty meetings are scheduled for next Tuesday. So I believe, correct, your faculty meetings are next Tuesday?
Eight.
The eighth, right, thank you. Yeah, so I have the eighth written down. Reinforce and articulate the building behavioral expectations for students. So that's the written statement for teachers to use when reviewing these expectations. That'll be worked on by administrations with teachers as teammates to come up with those expectations are. And then the evidence, like I said, that they'll be able to acknowledge that they were reviewed and what they are. And then we're going to have presentations in our schools by our school resource officer about making good decisions and avoiding terrible consequences. So those presentations will be for all students. And as a part of that, we will use data, there's an activity, a follow-up activity, and we can use the data from that activity to assess student understanding and knowledge regarding that presentation. So these are the immediate actions that we can do over the next two to three days that we feel we can put in place right away to enhance and support our school climate and culture and ensure that hallways are properly supervised. Some of the things you're gonna see in midterm and long-term will be stuff we spoke about regarding cameras and camera placement and additional cameras, long-term SEL plans, where are we with challenge day, where are we with different grade levels having certain SEL experiences? How are we reducing anxiety in our student body? The SEL liaison coordinator and her role in this. These are the action steps that we are going to be doing, walking in the door tomorrow for the short-term, immediate, visible, actionable items with midterm and long-term goals being developed. Only so much you can do in one day to get things really, we have everything we need to put into plan. This type of action plan that I gave to you will be developed for each building separately for items going to the midterm and long-term.
So we have an update on some of those things that you're talking about for the February meeting?
Yes, absolutely. So by the February seventeenth meeting, some of these things already would have been in place and we may be adjusting them and modifying them as we go along, but I will be able to give you an update. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just suggest something, like a hundred years ago, when I was there in the school, we used to get the deans, security people, social workers and meet with a group of kids. They know what's going on and they're our first-line people, not only the staff, but the kids. Meet them down, ask them, hey, where's the problem area? What do you suggest? What do you see? Where'd you, and if we can involve them, I think it would help out.
Absolutely, so that, that's, that wasn't a part of our media, like for tomorrow type of plan, but that's absolutely in our midterm and long-term plan. Of course, student engagement, groups, targeted groups for certain counseling sessions or presentations. So that you'll see in those long-term plans and in the midterm plan. that you'll see in those long term plans and in the midterm plans absolutely.
And how big is the scope of all the students right because obviously ninth graders view the school a little bit differently than 12th graders 12th graders been here four years they've been going through it you know.
Yep so ninth graders haven't had a typical year since sixth grade right so there's a lot you know to a new building first time so yes all different areas.
Heather? Yeah I have a few questions so these four additional security guards to in the middle school to the high school are they being taken from another school or are they new hires?
So they are Joe can you explain?
So they're working additional hours the security vest area five plus and they'll be working additional hours.
Okay.
So there'll be some security guards who are going over 40 hours.
So Heather can I just piggyback on that for us before you go forward so they're just going to be working more hours and we're not getting more in?
No that's a part of our plan too but for tomorrow I can't hire somebody by tomorrow so the idea for this week immediate and actionable items that we can do tomorrow we're going to be having people that are going to work extra hours.
So they normally do nights or something and now they're going to be doing days as well am I correct?
Correct some of some of the staff is coming that usually work the level of sixes they're going to start working earlier in the morning and covering early shifts and then doing their regular shift also.
So we'll be extra up bodies.
Correct.
I also have questions because I've heard it come up numerous times about stairwells how that seems to be a place where there's a lot of nonsense going on is there a plan in place for those stairwells for there to be an adult supervision there during the passing periods?
So in strategy one where it says formalized hallway presence that's really the principals denoting those areas in their building that they find most problematic and making sure there's an adult in those areas during the change of periods so that's going to be at the building level plan with the action of formalized supervision in areas of the building that need supervision.
And then just to stay on that first one you know I let Dan what does the data collection actually look like how is that going to be measured?
The the data regarding the collection of each individual at their post so it'll be done through observation intermittent observation and administrative walkthroughs and walk in the building and checking that during the times that your that people are assigned to certain areas that they're being covered we have the ability to do that through central office administrators through directors all working as a team with the high school administration and middle school administration and then kind of like a tally mark thing like how many people were currently at their post that were supposed to be how many weren't who do we need to speak to?
Okay so it's not collecting data on behaviors of students it's collecting data
Specifically to the supervision.
If the if the security guard is where they're supposed to be when they're designated to be there.
Right.
Okay so will we monitor that?
Yes.
Okay just a couple more things as far as the written statement for teachers
Yep.
Do we have a specific class that that's going to be done in?
So we have a formalized where that'll be at the building level again for them to plan but we're going to take our code of conduct and our buildings missions and visions that we already have reviewed before and it's a great time because we're about halfway through the school year to revitalize behavioral expectations revitalize expectations in the school building provide some information for teachers to do and then the principals would decide is it happening through English class is it happening through social studies where is that happening so they'll let me know.
Can I get any suggestions?
Sure.
Is it possible perhaps to utilize the PPS staff and again I know we don't have the amount of staff to go into every single say English class.
Right.
But to do something like you know you'll have whatever teacher you've designated that's going to talk to the students and reiterate the code of conduct but maybe the guidance in conjunction with the social worker or psychologist can come up with creating like a like a video that can be just played in each of those classes telling students you know if there's an issue this is where you go needs can get involved too just kind of a little pressure of there's an issue there's a problem there are people here in this building that you can go to you know multiple people you know.
We could look at an avenue like that I think it's a great resource that you can constantly have and even post and I think it would be a great resource for parents as well where if we create a resource about if your child's having a problem and they need to reach out to somebody we can have like a duality there so yes we can look at something like that do you have samples of that like has your district done that?
Um yeah.
Good can you share it with me?
Sure.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask some of these conversations that I've really had is the SEL director because I know she doesn't serve as one particular school is she able to be a participant in these conversations as well?
Absolutely.
Is that something she can do as well to integrate into the conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay and then I know this might be something more of a short long term I know in certain school districts the deans don't have teaching periods because of the needs of the population they need to actually be interacting either with parents and staff or in the hallway I don't know if that's a conversation that's ever been had because I believe that the deans.
So our deans teach two periods a day they're in the teachers' union in order for them to maintain seniority as a teacher they have to teach two periods a day some school districts have deans in the administrative unit that those are probably the ones who do not teach at all but if you're a teacher you have to be 40% teaching what you're certified in and earning your longevity or your seniority in in order to maintain your spot.
And then my next conversation on that because I know it's been done in certain districts too I know advisory is a conversation so that in certain ways they can have a tool they can do and need their partner for teaching but also that coupled with an advisory and advisory group so even if it gets a little bit of wiggle time and not being in the classroom for two periods if that's something maybe is worth a conversation to have more presence because if they're in the classroom it's hard to sometimes.
Yeah so they would have to be in the classroom for those two periods we talked about advisory today it was one of the things we were brainstorming we have an issue as you all know we're at eight period day and the amount of minutes and we had to remove our homeroom period because we needed to take those minutes for instructional time so we actually extended like the period either period two or three I'm not sure which one in each building but we extended periods where they do announcements and things of that nature during that class period but we didn't have time to have an actual formalized like advisory homeroom period because the required amount of minutes of 990 hours of instruction a year.
And then we were we could get that done period.
For a couple of million dollars we could.
Shades something.
Right yeah we've we've talked about it probably for years about you know.
Hey so I have a couple of questions I think a lot of people kind of already asked spoke about them but I'll go in reverse so as far as advisory period I just started it so I think it is a good thing and it's there's different forms of it and it would have to obviously be negotiated with our teachers' union because it's something that impacts their workday but I do think it's something that's worthwhile because it's something that would be steady and be consistent you can do a two twice a month advisory this 20 minutes where you shave off two minutes a period and you can bring that and you make connections with kids and people who aren't familiar with an advisory period this is basically some creating something where every student has a connection with an adult so you basically would have maybe groups of ten students and they need it's not really therapy but you can make different themes throughout the year and that's something that I think that would be really helpful and back to nine period day I did see in one of our emails information about AP capstone so if we need a nine period day I'd want in favor of bringing a nine period day to the high school because I think that it's something that a lot of schools that are successful high schools and schools that offer opportunities for the students they do have a nine period day obviously it has to be negotiated but I think the benefit for the students would be great challenge day I know the high school administrators and so forth and the district administrators brought challenge day to the high school I think that that is something really powerful and obviously you can't make that happen tomorrow you know but I think that that's something that the kids really really need to bring back and I think it's something that can you know help to you know really impact the culture and I think that that's something that I would like to see what Dan said as far as student leadership I know when we had a presentation last year last time about the equity team and student equity team I think the student leadership team is could be really impactful and helping to bring about change and I and I think I would like to try to utilize the students because I think Dan has a right they they really can help us with this process and I think I'm really happy that what we're trying to do is really to support the buildings and walkthroughs I don't know if this is I'm interested if we all are doing walkthroughs if the central is doing walkthroughs I don't know if the board event is allowed to do walkthrough but I think sometimes if we actually get to really see then that data might be really telling like let's let's really do a walkthrough together and you know some of us are available we walk through the building and then we walk through a month later and see how that has changed so I'm really interested in doing that and maybe even doing that walkthrough and have the conversations with some of our student leaders and lastly the cameras you know I work in the district I work in the building and I worked in the high school before as the dean and so forth I think the cameras could really support us because unfortunately kids in general know if there's cameras or not cameras and I was wondering can we at least get a timeline for when the cameras are going to be in place so that we can help support the yeah building teams and with that like can we get a timeline by next week?
So really well the timeline really relies on whether you want to couple or decouple the security vestibules because the technology recommendations that Dan has done with and an evaluation of the cameras is done and ready to go it really has been coupled with the delay in the security vestibules and those coming in over cost then trying now we're in the process of replanning and repricing out this suggested model from the building committee so I can say we could probably get an estimate or whatever within the next two to four weeks of that have that done meet with the building committee see if that's an option within our smart schools fund we have the technology plan already done and then it's a submission to the state so the timeline I see as like an outside timeline we probably could if we can make a decision on whether we're keeping the security vestibules in this amount of money or not based on like in three to four weeks the board could make a decision on decouple or keep it together and send it up so and then it would just be the state submission process and how long that takes and then we could start right away.
So you say we could just separate the phases like you have.
You can't separate you would have to decide whether you want to keep the vestibules in the smart schools bond money or not because it's a single submission so it would leave money on the table you would have your tech part which I told you we have kind of two estimates like a 750,000 down to a 550,000 that all include increased cameras and an evaluation of that then it's a matter of how much do the vestibules cost and can we afford both together and then submitting that together and I would imagine you know BBS has been working on it a couple of weeks with Matt back because I would imagine within a week or two I can have that back for the board to look at the prices of that and we can make some decisions and then really get the smart tools up to the state.
I would say one of some of those wonderful numbers that Frank has showed us today and some of the savings and stuff like that we might you know be able to.
There may be a way like I was saying to figure out other expense other revenues for the security and get the technology up there so with it maybe on the 17th we can have a really in-depth conversation about that and then go forward to that.
Can I ask a couple of questions please?
Sure.
Something I've heard we touched on but going back to the reason why we're discussing this with the violence in schools that we all see you you said that they're reporting feeling you we're going to have reporting feeling of concern as part of the right now goals how are we going to get an accurate measure of whether or not these students feel safe or the teachers for that matter and the security guards for that matter?
So we have already done surveys due to being a comprehensive district in need.
Who's being surveyed?
Parents teachers students.
Of who?
Of the district.
I mean I've never been surveyed.
Yeah everyone so the survey went out by email to everybody early in the did we do the district one this fall or last spring?
I'm not trying to step when you were just by show hands.
In the fall?
Has any parent given this survey?
Fall of 20.
Yeah but I'm sorry.
Yes we have results so yes so there's there are results that we're using the data from right now to speak about these things we have parent data and student data and teacher data already as starting points.
From 2020.
I have to get the date specifically whether it's 20 or 2021 we have to repeat that measure as a part of our submission to the state each time so that would be when we redo the data get the data points and look at to see if those areas that were identified as need which is there were questions in there regarding school safety school violence there were questions in there in data points and then looking at where it is as we move along through this journey of immediate action midterm action long term action.
So I if I may suggest I mean 2020 I believe COVID struck us right March of 2020?
March 2020.
So we really weren't even here so maybe we heard said something.
Fall of 2020 is when the survey went out so we weren't in session then we didn't do one last year we only did one last year for the middle school because of that target but we didn't do one last year for the district because of what you're saying is because of the way.
So can we do one now and maybe in the spring?
There's one coming up in the spring.
In the spring.
Yep.
Because I'm going to tell you a general theme and feeling of concern from parents is it's not safe right now.
Then that's why we wrote on here reported feeling of concern because we know that we hear it.
Okay so.
And the data is a is an annual spring survey so that will be again in the spring that we're required to do that.
Okay so we rectify the problem now because we're in February 1st if we start these all these measures then by springtime hopefully it'll be safe by then is that what our goal here is?
My goal absolutely absolutely my hope would be that the data would reflect.
So what we're saying we don't need a survey right now to know that the parents as.
I don't need a survey now to know that the parents feel anxious in return.
Okay fair I just want to put that out there that we are.
No I'm aware of that and we had a conversation about that in the executive session about particular matters yesterday we all were on the same page we all had the same level of concern and I don't need to put a survey out to know that there's a concern because I speak to parents here for parents and I know that and I also work with the people who are in the buildings who have the same concern so we're very aware of that.
What I have a couple of questions so just buckle up I mean I don't mean buckle up that was the one.
Remember where it's seen.
I I didn't mean buckle up I mean just hold on because I have a couple of questions the write-ups from the teachers and the whoever goes write-ups teachers staff cafeteria staff I don't know who exactly is allowed to do a write-up where do they go?
They go to a dean.
And after a certain amount of write-ups what are the consequences for those that say?
Should we do a tiered scaffold implementation of discipline so you may get a write-up for some behavior that was nonviolent or you know you know that you were being difficult or whatever it is and you would get a conference you know conversation then it may be lunch detention then it may be after school detention then it may be in-school suspension and then out of school suspension being the most severe if you have an incident a high level of an incident like a physical altercation or you know going after somebody it depends on the level of the altercation pushing and shoving would be in school a physical altercation with punches would be out of school suspension there are events that occur that rise even to five day out of school suspension which is the legal limit for a principal then recommended to a superintendent's hearing which would then go before a hearing officer for additional long-term consequences.
Okay so pushing and shoving is in school punching and assaulting is that?
Depending on how violent or the episode yes and remember it's that there is no specific actual discipline outcome there is looking at the current what happened and then evaluating it in the scope of how the behavior was how physical it was how aggressive it was was it horseplay was it and all those things are taken into consideration when you speak.
So if two if two students two not one not that one is pushing another kid but if a child pushes another kid and the other kid pushes back is does that up the ante with that and that brings them to an attitude suspension or they both can can both get into a suspension for something?
If it's pushing and shoving and horseplay but an aggressive.
Well not horseplay if you're pushing somebody.
Yeah like if you're pushing at a anger and it's not an all out fist fight brawl and depending on age because there's a difference between a sixth grader and a 12th grader and. because there's a difference between a sixth grader and a twelfth grader and you're talking eighteen and thirteen.
No, there's no difference to the consequences to the victim that.
No, but you just said, you just asked me about two people pushing, so in there to me, I don't see a victim, I see two people equally pushing and shoving.
But if I get, if you come up to me right now, Mr. Ashbath, and you push me, right, and now I'm the victim, correct? Now, if I don't hit you back, I'm just the victim, but if I hit you back, then I'm, I'm, I'm party to this, correct? Two, what is the term for that? Two, um, people in, in concert with each other, correct? So if I defend myself and then I'm, I'm, I'm now the aggressor back to you.
So there's, um, it depends, so I have to tell you, there are circumstances where sometimes your defense is to ensure that you don't have physical body conflict to yourself. So taking a posture or pushing somebody off of you who's hitting you, punching you, you may not get the same consequence or as the other student that has.
Is there a consequence?
For what?
If you have on video somebody getting punched, I punch you, I walk up to you and I punch you in the face, not you, I'm Johnny, I won't be Johnny, but that's one of the kids. I'm St. Anthony and I go up and I punch Ben.
You gotta use my tip.
Sorry, I'm trying to think of things to put on here. Um, now, is there a consequence to Ben, Ben punches that person back, because Ben yet told me that he defended himself.
There could be, because if the defense is aggressive where you're going.
So what do we suggest they do, lay down?
No, we suggest that you do not engage in a physical violent act and get yourself to safety if you can. And if you can't, because you're in a circumstance where you're surrounded by other kids and the kid is continuing to come at you, then that gets evaluated that way as well, so it's not a perfect sign.
What if a student does that to a teacher?
If a student hits a teacher?
Student punches a teacher and the teacher doesn't punch him back, is there consequences to the teacher?
If a student punches a teacher.
It's a very direct question, if a student punches a teacher and the teacher does not punch him back, does the teacher, did the teacher get a consequence?
No.
Okay, what if the teacher punches him back?
Yes, yes, you'd never hit a child. You could protect yourself and ward off and you would, you would get a consequence if you are an educator who punches.
If I'm a student and I punch a teacher, I'm, I'm probably getting suspended, correct, out of school suspension, I may be arrested, which rightly so, you should be arrested if you punch a teacher yourself, but don't arrest them, but I think we need to go back and touch some of these policies because for our students in our own town to not feel safe coming to school, if our teachers don't feel safe being in these buildings, our security guards are doing the best they can with whatever they can do. If they're, these people are saying, I'm writing these kids up, we're sending them to the dean, you hear on these videos a teacher running out, getting in between kids screaming, "Security, security!" This, this is not, I'm sorry, I know we have a plan here, but I want to know, how did it get to this point that this level of violence got this bad? I need to look at the principals, but I want, I want to hear from you guys. How did it get to this point? How did we not identify these, these violent fluctuations before it got to the point where the videos are on social media?
So I have a.
Guys, excuse me, excuse me, we're just going to have the discussion up here, there is a time for participating, we'll let you speak.
It's a terrific one.
We got you though.
Kids that are scared to defend other kids.
Sir, just give us some time, we'll let you speak, I promise, I promise.
But this is my point, and, and I'm sorry, and I know that there are some people in this district that are doing the most they can and the best they can. Mr. Ashbath, I would give you credit that you, you are trying, but I want to know how it got to the point where students have gotten so confident that they can act this way and not, their, their consequences are not going to be that bad. You know what, in-school suspension, it's a great theory, but how about my kid screws up, why don't you inconvenience me? Why are you inconveniencing a teacher to sit in a room with them for, for the next day where they can start up and fight two other kids? If they're, if they're showing violence in schools, it should be zero tolerance. And maybe if we start inconveniencing these parents a little bit, that of the kids that are recidivist and they continuously do this, maybe then we'll start to see some difference in the way this school is going, because right now it's, it's not looking good.
And what I would say to you is I understand your belief system regarding discipline. Um, there are absolute rules and guidelines regarding school discipline and you have a high school principal here and recidivism. We, we look at repeat offenders and over the course of the last incidents, those are not kids who are repeat offenders that, to that level. And I will say that behavior has escalated due to kids being in the middle of a pandemic. And this is states and countrywide that behaviors are escalating. They're escalating for students of all grade levels and they're escalating in districts across the county.
But those victims aren't being, they were under the same COVID, same COVID restrictions. Those victims were, were going to school for a place where they feel safe and we failed.
Some people have better support systems outside of school, some people have less stressors outside of school. Everyone comes to a school differently and we try to meet the individual needs of each kid. And every kid doesn't respond to the stress, anxiety and pressures of what they've gone through regarding maybe losing a parent during the pandemic, maybe losing a grandparent or a caregiver or whatever anybody has experienced, people respond to stress, anxiety and anger differently. We are seeing more.
That doesn't give them a right to figure.
It does not, but nobody says they're getting a right and we are disciplining and consequences them and we are.
Are we making it count? Are we making it matter?
Yes, yes. And the, and you can say no or you could say.
I didn't say anything.
No, but you.
You're out, I didn't say it.
Oh, I thought you said, but the answer is yes, because I'm the one looking at the data. So when I tell you that there are significant long-term suspensions for kids who have behaved that way, I can tell you yes. That there were kids who have been out on long-term suspensions for violent behavior. There have been kids out on long-term suspensions for bringing marijuana or baked marijuana in our schools. I see those, I'm a part of those.
Those, you're a part of those and you see those, as long as they're brought to your attention, because anything that goes more than what, five days?
It has, if anything five, if, if it's recommended for longer than five days, comes to me.
Okay, anything shy of that or anything that you don't get told about.
Is at the building level.
So you can speak all of your, your, your hearing of.
Right, so part, so then maybe you're speaking about looking at.
I'm speaking about, I'm speaking about the kids that are, that are scared to come to school. I'm speaking about going into Uncle Joseph's and running into two mothers of two young girls who are sitting there telling me, they're scared, they're actually scared, these are two little girls. I'm speaking of my own son, I'm speaking of my own children, you know?
No, I was, I wasn't referring, I was referring to.
But I'm speaking for everybody who is feeling like they're not being heard. I'm speaking for the teachers who are saying, I'm writing this kid up every day, he's cursing me out and he's getting sent back the next day. I'm speaking for, you know, my own children that, that get what you consider a minimal amount of physical altercation that doesn't do anything back and nothing happens to, you know, the kid's right back to them an hour later to intimidate them again. I'm speaking on behalf of the victims because all we keep doing is defending the aggressors. And I don't hear enough about what's happening with the victims.
I'll disagree with you that we're, we're not paying attention to the victims and that.
I'm not saying that, because you only hear about things that go more than five days, correct?
I hear of things, other things that happen, I'm responsible for the discipline of things that would be longer than five days. Um, today, working hand-in-hand with the building administrators and coming up with a plan, we will be more engaged as a team with building-level discipline and working and supporting so that the environment can change. Um, we had the conversation yesterday about very specific incidences and I agree with you that the behavior needs to change and our kids need to feel safe in school and that is my goal. Um, so we will be working on those areas that we see are of concern and the day-to-day discipline that you're talking about and looking and evaluating the day-to-day discipline, you know, that's not, you know, being, um, ignored. We're going to have conversations about that and we're going to talk about the type of discipline. We spoke about, you know, when doing an investigation, students are to be retained where they're being spoken to, you know, like certain explicit things that we have spoken about, we'll continue to speak about and support the building.
It's not just students, Mr. Ashbath, it's not just students, it's the teachers.
Oh, it is, yeah.
It, it's the security guards who can only do so much because God forbid you put your hands on someone else's kid. It's, it's so many things that we have tied the hands of the people that are, that we literally hand our most precious gifts to every day and then we tell them, but, you know, you only do so much because if you do anything above and beyond, you're going to be hung out to dry. And I'm, I'm, and I know I'm coming at you because you are the face of every principal in this district.
I am.
And I, I, I don't mean to comment, I do mean to comment every principal that's, that's out there and.
No, like I always say, I'm fully responsible for it all and I will take responsibility for it and I am the liaison to you as a board of education and to the community. And I will, I am making you the, um, the promise that this is going to be attended to, can work with and supported with my building-level leadership, our district-level administrators, the central office, I know those things you're telling me, I hear them from other people as well. They're, they're not calling on deaf ears, I, the voice you have, I hear the voices of those people too and I'm upset about it. And I'm going to do something about it with the people who work every day in those buildings and with the people who can make the most influence and change of what's going on in those buildings as a part of our plan. And that's what I'm going to continue to do and update you guys on and work with my leadership team and get everyone involved at a mi- a micro level to improve and enhance what the climate is in those buildings. Because every kid deserves the right and every teacher and every staff member deserves the right to come to work in school feeling safe. And that's bottom line.
But I can make a suggestion, I, I know in-school suspension is used as a tool that we use towards these students when they do minimal things, which is minimal, you know, pushing and shoving. Maybe more parents need to be inconvenienced, maybe, you know, if my kid gets in a fight and I have to take on the work right now because they fought in school, which is against the rules and it's against the rules of school and it would be against, it's against my rules at home. But maybe then I'll, discipline will start at home.
So I'm just going to give you one data point that I think I kind of accurately know off the top of my head. So in two thousand and eighteen, up to this point of the school year, there were approximately sixty-four or sixty-five incidents of suspension in the high school. This year, we have a hundred and forty-something. So we have increased by more than eighty out-of-school suspension, that's our data. So when you say we're not suspending kids out, in two thousand and eighteen at this time of the year, we had about sixty-four incidences of suspension out of school for behavior. We're in the one-forties right now, so that shows that one, there's escalating behavior, but two, the escalating consequences that are going with it are the out-of-school suspensions. Superintendent hearings were in the range, I believe in the thirties and it's February. Typically, that's an end of year, so there has been an increase in the severity of consequences and the amount of consequences going on. And the hard part is, educationally, they've already been out of school so long and you're trying to balance giving an appropriate consequence that is meaningful and impactful and trying to change behavior. But also these kids have had such broken education since March twenty twenty that the longer we keep them away from the environment, the worse they come back in transitioning in because it becomes even harder for those kids to transition in. So some of the work we've been doing is, for example, out of, out of twenty-two kids who are on a long-term suspension for physical behavior, twelve of them were required to have a certain amount of mandated counseling by a licensed counseling professional before return. And only one is a repeat offender in that group. So we are looking at repetition in students and there have been years where I've been superintending here, we, we had three, four, five heavy hitters. That's not, no pun intended, but where we were focused on those kids and we knew they were repeat offenders and came up with alternate plans for them. That's not what we're seeing, what we're seeing is more aggressive behavior by kids that didn't exhibit it before. For whatever mental health reasons there are, so we're trying to hit it through the mental health, social emotional part, consequences when it happens to make sure our kids are safe in school and it's ensuring the safety is number one and then making sure the kids are okay who are behaving that way. So we are trying to hit it well-rounded and we will continue to do that and there have been serious consequences. When you think of a hundred and forty-five incidents of suspension, that's high, that's, you know, more than double than two thousand and eighteen. The reason I called eighteen is because of the last full year before the COVID. So like that's a lot.
Which I appreciate that for the kids that they're, that.
We are doing.
But in, in, in fairness to, you know, the other ninety-nine percent of the students, parents that, that are in this district, that children are not out there beating kids up, bashing them down. What they got going on is, is, is sad and it's unfortunate and I'm glad we're doing whatever we can, but don't turn my kid into that same type of person because he's continuously being.
Because his anger.
And I, I'm using my kid as a, as a, just a general statement, I don't mean specifically my kid, that's where I have an issue.
I understand that, I absolutely understand that.
Good, what about that?
Yes, first, I'm confused on the two additional security guards. We're giving the security guards more hours, I don't know if you give, you have eight security guards, you give them the more hours, you still have eight security guards.
No, so guys who aren't on, we're adding two to each building, Joe, do you want to explain?
If we have eight, we're just bringing them in early and we still have eight.
So right now in a high school, on normal day spots, there are possibly six security guards that work six to six forty-five, two fifteen. And I have three additional security guards that come in at eleven o'clock to cover the eleven to six P M. The eleven to six P M guys are going to start early, so we'll have three additional, four additional that are going on each day. Starting earlier in the day, so they'll be, you know, always two hours, three hours earlier than it would normally be and we'll, we'll continue to work for six o'clock.
So you have two more guys coming on.
No, it's one, it's actually one people.
So they're overlapping.
Earlier, earlier in the day, I'll have more people earlier in the day when the students start coming in.
So eventually we'll still have just the six again.
I'm sorry, I said that again.
Are the people who would normally leave staying to make sure that we maintain the two extra throughout the time period?
So from six, from six forty-five until two fifteen in the afternoon, we will have the maximum amount of people we can have in, in, of.
Everyone who can work will be working.
Correct.
But that, does that, how does that give us the two extra?
Well, it's only too much for a certain amount.
I didn't, I didn't have them earlier in the morning, I didn't have, I didn't have, they would start at eleven o'clock, so normally.
So they're going to stay the whole day, so we had eight, now we're going to have ten people the whole day.
No, only till two.
No, they're just overlapping.
So let me explain again, so we're people who normally came in at eleven, which is four hours into the school day, now they're going to come in at seven. So there'll be two extra for four hours during a six-hour school day. And then if, so they'll have E there.
Eventually go back to six.
So we, we need to.
Correct?
No, it would stay the whole day. No, it would stay at eight, so it's normally six and becomes eight and now it's going to be E all the way through.
No, it goes back at eight, less than one.
No, actually, Dan, they're tours are overlapping in the morning and that's it, correct? So from seven to eleven forty-five, originally they were only coming in eleven forty-five, they're coming in pre-tour, let's, so you understand that. Pre-tour and they're overlapping in the morning, but there's no more, they just overlap for a longer period of time.
For the morning.
Usu- usually, usually the ones, the tours start at six forty-five in the morning, I have six security guards at max coming in. There's a maximum I have in there and then I have three additional start at eleven o'clock to cover the eleven to six P M. The people that'll work in the eleven to six are going to start early, so from six forty-five till eleven o'clock, I'll have two additional people during that period of time. And, and they'll be there, we'll have, we'll have a full complement of security guards till two fifteen at that point.
They're getting pre-tour overtime from seven to eleven, that's pretty much it, they're getting pre-tour overtime from seven to eleven, I don't know.
We'll talk about seven forty-five.
So we need, again, what we need to do is say we like that plan, we need to find. This is what we could do in one day, everyone, we talked about securing more security guards, so he's getting everybody we have on staff on hand to spend more hours in our building. And so what that does is it increases by two for four hours during the school day out of a six-hour day. But it maintains what the afternoon would typically look like, which is having E on hand.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven to two fifteen.
All right. Now, the other thing I have is, this is a beautiful plan, if I had just had a bomb, I don't want to, I know you're doing a great job, but I don't even want an answer, but why didn't the building representatives, our administrators in the buildings come up with this? They know, they're on firsthand online of this and notice what's going on, they're just sitting here until we get hit by the public. We have to have special meetings and then this plan comes, not, not you, but they should be, they should be giving you a plan and saying, "Hey Glenn, listen, I got a problem, I got kids getting this shit carried out, we have to do something about this." It shouldn't be us going, "Hey, we want them to do something about this," it's, it's in reverse, not you, but it's building level. They got to take responsibility on, I mean, I'm friends with a lot of them, but you know what? I'm here for every kid in this district, my grandkids, my kids, your kids, everybody's kids. I don't mean that, just how I feel, I'm very passionate on this, like, and then these people are here because of the fight, that fight that they all seen on the video probably that. And I'm a grandfather, I'm a father, I, I worry about all the kids and I probably get thrown off the board, I don't care. Those kids should not be allowed in my building anymore with these children. I don't know what discipline is, and now you have to go through classes, maybe you want to explain that to the public because a lot of them are just saying nothing's been done, but what's being done with those kids? If I was the king, they wouldn't be here. Probably get brought up on charges or whatever, but that's the way I am, I'm rough when I talk and I apologize, but I'm short on proof. But you just let them know maybe what's going on with those kids, especially that fight that was disgusting. If I was there, I probably would have gotten the fight with the kids that were in the fight and then I'd be in prison right now, but like I said, I'm rough and I apologize.
I won't speak specifically to the videos because I would believe that would be inappropriate regarding, um, privacy. But when fights occur like that, um, and you may have seen it, but I, as, I'm not allowed to really speak to those, so when fighters, fights occur, no, because if there's an appeal of a decision, it goes to the board, so no.
Fight somebody, not that one.
When fights like those that we have seen on videos most recently occur in a building, students receive a suspension from their principal, which is a maximum of five days, and then they're recommended to a superintendent's hearing, which is an official hearing that has attorneys in it and it's a hearing regarding finding guilt or not guilty regarding the charges that the principal is stating that the student violated on our code of conduct. At those hearings, there's a hearing officer, the hearing officer makes a determination and then makes recommendation for suspension. Typically, those behaviors that you'll see there, in, that we've most recently seen in the past have, have seen suspensions of five to ten months of out-of-school suspension. I can't speak to particulars because I'm not speaking about any incident regarding those two videos, but in past behavior, when I've seen altercations like that, I've seen hearing officers find people guilty and students found to be out for half a year to a year of school. During that time, we have to provide home teaching to the student and educate them, regardless of whether they have an I E P or not, they get their special education services if it's a student. We provide the home teaching and they would be suspended out of school. There are some where suspensions go longer, where there's a suspension school within our alternative high school where kids have found that, where we found kids who haven't been as quite as violent can find success in this all suspension school. So, but when I, when violence, really violent behaviors occur, it would go to a hearing and then the hearing officer would make determination and a recommendation to me for this plan and then I impose this plan, yes.
Can I say something, Mr. Carol Leos, can we get thrown off the board for his answers and I'm probably going to get thrown off for my thoughts? Sometimes I feel that you can fix things by spending a little extra money and support and is it a possibility that, I know Ms. Rivers brought up, changing the design of the deans and taking the classes away or maybe a special teacher, a special assignment or additional duties where we can give the teachers money maybe to, to work additional hours, to also fill in or to increase the amount of support that the administrators have. I mean, if we don't have cameras in the building and they can't, there's five administrators or six administrators in the building, they can't be in every stairwell, every location, but if you do have additional support maybe.
Yeah, so when we do our, you know, our short-term and long-term goals, those are absolutely things that we're going to discuss. Today, we discussed immediate, actionable, visible, and that really related to, one, getting all of our security guards in that we have available to us, getting all the people we have available to us in the hallways, in locations and supervising as we develop these plans, so these options that I gave you here, these strategies are short-term, those type of recommendations such as possibly putting somebody on, a teacher on a special assignment full-time or bringing in somebody to, you know, a, a teacher leader to work with and those type of things will be the next level of brainstorming for implementing systemic change, getting things back in order and supporting the administrators regarding this type of behavior in the schools.
So I'm, I'm in favor of spending additional funds, it's going to help to bring the school back.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just real quick, um, we talked about this and I think we've done a lot of good discussion, I think. On the medium to long-term plan, I know what I'd like to say is, is what is security, we need additional bodies, how do we get additional bodies? Is that a, 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 for our rate of need change or what it is, can supplement with outside security?
Yeah, so we're going to come back with those recommendations as we spoke, yeah.
As far as the cameras and, and the security best deals, so that's, we talked about doing that smart school money so we don't have to spend any other money, but we have two-point-three million dollars in the capital reserve, have we allocated that money out?
So I have to read the, it's not allocated specifically to projects, but I have to read, you could always pass another resolution modifying the language of that. So I will give you a report on what we intended on spending it, on how much money is in there and what we spent already. And I remember, Dan, you had made a modification on the last one to vote about adding, we added like concrete sidewalk, we added like some additional language that we could use. So you are able to modify by, I think that one, Frank, requires a community vote to modify the language of a, of a capital reserve?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we do have, you know, a vote coming up in, in May, right, that we could always look at modifying the language of that current reserve to meet some of the needs if we want to, like in, in two and a half weeks when we meet again or three, seventeen days, sixteen days. If we realize that we have to decouple to get the cameras and the technology in, then maybe we could discuss putting up a, a resolution to modify the capital to do the security part.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa, yes, whatever direction, and you guys can advise on that.
Yeah, and then, the last thing, we talked about the long-term things like challenge day and I think everybody has seen that and the help it, it gives our students. But I think we need to, in the medium term, because that's going to be a long-term thing, if we can get some normalized events for the students. You know, because we spoke about this, that they haven't had a normal, the, the ninth graders haven't had a normal year since sixth grade, so they haven't had that participation, they haven't had interaction where they, they're meeting their buddy or they're meeting someone that they didn't ever met before. So I, I think, you know, if you guys can bring some and come up with some ideas, if that requires us to do additional funding for that, you know.
And I think we're moving in a very good direction where we can start doing those things.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, the sports nights, the this night, the, you know, so we will, I'll work with the administration as part of the midterm and long-term plan of doing things by grade, by every student being available to do those things.
Thank you.
But just to add to the, the security, so the original resolution was pretty broad for the capital reserve, so I'm thinking it most likely would actually be in there, we will obviously check, but.
That would be great.
Matt, I was texting Matt, thanks about the, about the quote, so he said, we should have the quote from the contractor on those booths on Monday.
Right.
And Jim from B B S was supposed to get us the design portion like two weeks ago, so we have a meeting with him tomorrow and we'll just demand that we get it by that same week, so hopefully by next Friday.
Great, so after, let's have a building meeting and then we'll have that done before we come to the board and we can evaluate that, thank you.
So if you need the building committee.
Yep, gotcha.
Perfect.
Gotcha. Great, anyone else?
Thank you, Paul, thank you. Okay, so this is the public portion of the meeting, this section of the agenda allows us to listen to the opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question, sorry, I don't have my glasses left at home. I'll make a brief statement on that as including but not limited to agenda items, the time available will be limited to five minutes. Today, we're going to stay away from the podium, we're just going to sit in our seats. So to be able to be easier, I think we can, we can manage that. So just raise your hands, I promise we'll listen to everyone. Let's just try and keep it nice, we've heard wonderful things going on, we're looking to move in a positive direction. So we all want to go home, we all want to be heard, so just raise your hand, I'm just going to go with him first, he was very anxious to speak earlier, so. Just state your name, please.
Mike Calatton, I'm from the northern district. Thrice was talking about with the defending and, you know, whether or not pushing and shoving and how it is late. To tell you firsthand from a lot of students, because I, my house is like the rain central for what I want. And a lot of them witnessed that disgusting fight and wanted to jump in to help the kid and at least break it up. And other friends said not to do it because they're scared they're going to get in trouble. So rather than having kids protected and instantly, you got kids running away from it, which is horrible. So to Thrice's point, I don't care what anyone has to say, we are encouraging people that want to be impressive and, and completely discouraging anyone who wants to be a hero. And that's not how I was growing up and I can't say it's easy. I don't know about anybody else, but I, I taught, teach my kids, don't get in a fight because you got to do it, but if you see somebody else in trouble, you better help them because then you're just as bad as anyone doing it. And, and now we're encouraging kids to sit there and watch somebody get hurt, that wasn't a fight, that wasn't assault, and everyone says, yeah, that's crazy.
Thank you, Mike.
My name is David Calatton, I watch the train, they all went through the district. At what point, I, I called the police department because I just wanted to be knowledgeable on it. And I said, at what point do we reach out to you when, when we're not hearing back from, you know, I had written a letter to the principal of the high school, I had written a letter to Glenn, I hadn't heard anything, I'm not, wasn't talking about my children, just in general, I work in schools, I'm very concerned about the children. At what point did the police step in? They told me that they're, that it's, it's under what they call, there's passive aggression, there is assertive aggression, but then there's open aggression. Open aggression is what these hikes were. It's physical, it's harmful, there is a victim, especially the one where there's two-on-one. Why aren't we, why aren't they arrested? Why aren't there charges being made to them? Why aren't, why don't we have police in the school? I know we have V A J ons, I know there's a resource, Christine and Jean, that they are, they are resource officers for North Babylon High School. We need them here, we need, we need something more than, you know, like, I just feel like it's, nothing is strong enough and that's why it's not in this manner. It isn't always this bad, my oldest is twenty-seven, she's a teacher, it wasn't that bad then, but it's really bad right now and something has to be done, that's why we're here, that's why so many people are upset about it. I mean, this is, this is children, this is, they shouldn't feel unsafe to come to school.
It's everybody, it's all environments, children, teachers, staff.
But even more so children, you know, I'm going to tell, you, I, I, you can kind of fight for yourself, stand up for yourself, I have, have learned that, but a child, like the child in the video that are really getting hurt.
Just saying, again, so, you know, so since we've saw it too, it's just I'm coming from the Board of Education, just speaking to you like that. We've, we've been in direct contact with the super front day one, we wanted to have a special meeting, got, trying to have investigations, all that, we had a special meeting yesterday. We are concerned, we all up here are very concerned, you can hear the passion amongst everybody's voices. It is extremely concerning, how we got here and all that kind of stuff, first, we have to look forward and, and fix the problem, at least that's what I'm thinking. And then we can look back at how we got here and try to make sure that never happens again. I know Glenn can answer the question about the, about the police, so.
So when it comes to Suffolk County Police and charges regarding either an assault like you're speaking of, the victim and the victim's parents have to be the one who pressed charges, school districts are not allowed to press charges on behalf of a student that is either a victim of an assault or a victim of a crime. So the student and the student's parents, so our administration works with parents who may have been a victim of that or they even reach out to us, so the police were here today regarding an incident, they're investigating because the student's parents have filed charges and they're doing their investigation, but that always has to come from the student and the student's parents and it can't be us as the, sign off on the charges.
Were you asking if we can have more police presence in the building?
I mean, that would be.
So far as police presence, like, we've been working on that, I'm sorry to talk when you're.
No, that's okay, I was just saying that, like you said, would I like that, but what, my parents within this situation love that, you know.
Yeah, so I have to tell you, it's been a conversation of ours with Jeannie and the Suffolk County Police for a long time and they keep reducing and reducing the ability to provide us support in our buildings and do more in our building because we welcome that because of the partnership we want to have with the first precinct, you know, a lot of times my work ends up at, at midnight and one in the morning because the investigators who work in certain crime units are at night and I'm at home working with them and, you know, the police presence, the beat, on the beat, they're, they're out patrolling and Jeannie is in her three schools, you know, and it's scarce and I'm afraid because Jeannie's retiring, if they don't fill that position, we're going to be even off. So we, as a superintendent group, work really closely with the Suffolk County Police and we are all advocating for more when they were telling us that they were going to reduce and we're, we're begging for more and we're getting less. And we will continue to advocate for more support because the types of programs that they can do in our schools and the, the presence and their authority in the school and supporting some of these things that are going on, you know, we have had times when they've been very supportive where we have knowledge ahead of time and we have them available here or at a time, ahead of time with a police presence to make sure that nothing goes awry at those times. When we have that information, part of our midterm and long-term plan is a lot about communication as well, ensuring that people have avenues to communicate for a heads up. So, thank you, so for a heads up of, you know, let us know what's going on so that we can be proactive, so that is one of our goals and I appreciate you recognizing that it's important because we think so too.
Mr. Ashbuck, next question.
Yes.
Have you reached out to any of the other law enforcement around, like Suffolk County sheriffs, all this, I know that, that other.
I haven't particularly worked with the sheriffs.
I believe they have a program as well, if we cannot get, I mean, what you're saying is we may have Suffolk police to come and assist us and they are, they don't have the manpower, I'm assuming. I don't know to what degree that we reach out to them, like, I believe the SEALs, to guarantee, did we, I mean, did we go above the, the one reason, so that's.
So I've actually been there with, and I don't know the titles of the hierarchy, but with the head person in the precinct.
So that would be the commanding officer, so we reached out to him and he just.
I have in the past.
So Suffolk County Sheriff's, I believe the Sheriff Tulon has, has implemented some type of school safety or.
We can look into that, I've also worked with City was in, yeah, that, I was met with him and so did all the Suffolk Supes and that was part of the conversation where their manpower was down and we were asking for more because when he was in charge, that's what I was at that point.
Well, I think once they see, I mean, I'm sure they've seen the videos, so I'm sure once they know that we're having all these issues and that we're welcoming them in now, because I, I believe we had a conversation about there has to be a balance of police presence and not make it look like a correctional facility, right, we had that discussion. And I said, well, it starts to look like more like a correctional facility when we're seeing fights like this, right? So maybe now that we are telling them we want them here as opposed to really don't want, you know, maybe, maybe now they'll, they'll feel that.
Just so you know, we've never told them we don't want you here.
You've never told them you don't.
No, I have not. And I'll take the advice of the Sheriff's Department, look back, thank you.
Anyone else?
Maybe I had a big written book, I mean, well.
A for?
Job, I emailed Mr. Ashbuck to the school board seven days ago. Two emails, maybe fifteen, twenty-four calls, six messages, not one response. That's pathetic, Mr. Ashbuck. You're a superintendent, the community reaches out to you, you should respond, not push you off onto the principal, who, Mr. Clump, who was very professional. He was very respectful, we got a nice conversation on the phone, we agreed to disagree, don't shake your head yes because now you, now you got hit. It was embarrassing, you work for us, so when a community member calls you, you should at least reach out to them with an email saying they'll get back to you soon. My son decided not to wear a mask the day the court mandated it, he went above the court, I don't know if you think you're better than the court. You know, the other school districts in Long Island said it's an illegal mandate, they need to wear a mask, my son was respectful to every member of the staff that he dealt with. You denied an education at that, there were three options, sit in a room by himself, go home or put a mask on. So he got denied an education, you denied him an education because that's your policy. Now, to the violence that's going on in this school, this has been going on for years. I approached you four, probably three years ago up at the high school when now Governor Hope was giving a speech there about government control. And I don't remember it, but I do, I approached you, I was speaking to one of your assistants, they brought you over, because I had a problem, went up to the newsboy, spoke to a dean there. I told you then, if this is not handled, it's only going to get worse. Three years later, there's brawls, violence, heat in the hallways and you're talking about, we're going to put guards in the hallways, guards are in the hallways already. What, you're telling me there's no guards in the hallway? I know there's guards in the hallway, they're in the hallway, they stand in the hallway. You're going to add two extra guards, that's going to make a difference? The high school's huge, that's your answer? This would have never have been brought to this community's attention if a mother didn't put this on Facebook, all right? This has been going on, we're looking at how many suspensions, sixty a couple of years ago, now one hundred and forty? It took a mother to put this on, what are you doing? How are you not mind it? You're in charge of this school district, you can pour it off onto all these principals all you want, but you're in charge of this school district and what you're doing is an embarrassment, embarrassment. I'm going to find out when your contract's up and I'm going to make sure every time I come to these meetings to make sure we get rid of you. Because what you're doing to these kids in this school district is an embarrassment.
Just a reminder, thank you, gotcha.
No, it's an embarrassment. No, it's embarrassing, there's violence, we.
Keep it a little respectful, he does work here.
I get he does work here, but he works with me.
We got you, we heard you.
He works with me, I need one phone call. I gotta come here, not a phone, I keep getting, give me a phone call, an email? You know, that's ridiculous, that should be brought up. How is he not responding to parents' lack of service? Mr. Clump was great with me, I got nothing but high things to say about him. He was awesome. You are disgraced.
Thank you for your question.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I'm Karen Schmidt. I have two kids in high school, I'm also a public school educator. I've been teaching in public schools for twenty-four years, and I'm a firm believer that discipline should exist to change behaviors. With that said, I also work in a high school where it took things to change when a child was thrown into a glass trophy case in our main gym area. I don't want to see anyone's child getting thrown into a glass case because there are to be significant changes in the safety for our kids. I hear everything you're saying, and I understand the challenges that it takes to change a culture. With that said, I have a couple of questions. I understand we're increasing the number of security guards. What exactly is it that security guards are trained to do? What is their role in keeping the kids safe in the buildings? That's a question.
So I'm going to, is Mr. Arlant still here? There he is. So do you wanna answer exactly what the role and responsibilities are of the security guard?
So we have various posts throughout the school, different assignments for different schools. Some of us assign assignments, monitor visits coming into the school, some assign the hallways, monitor the hallways. And the board just assignments for the day is what they want to do. Every year we have annual training, right? They're state required, mandated training and commitment, we haven't done. They have outside professional commitment, they do the state mandated training within every year. Besides what's required by our district, we do additional training ourselves. I do my own training with the security guards over what the procedures are, what I expect from them in each school building. That's also part of it. We also have our SRO come in and sit down with it and have a discussion with them. So we have a little bit of record with them too. But those are some of the things that we do. Unfortunately, you know, we don't always have a full complement of security staff. When somebody goes out sick, we're not without sick. We're not always having a full complement of the security guards. But they do get training every year, they know what the expectations are when they come into the building, and what they're supposed to be doing each year.
And while waiting, Mr. Ashbuck, how is increasing the number of guards going to diminish the number of physical operations?
I'm hoping that the more presence in the hallways, the more visibility will help propel it a little bit.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, so there's some areas within the school that aren't covered or aren't manned. So the idea is in the plan with the additional adults, meaning deans, administrators, and security guards, and where in more locations that kids, no matter what point they're walking to and from, are always seeing an adult. And part of that is working with our educators that be standing in the doorways during the change of classes and just really having an adult present. Presence, because we all know proximity, presence, and visibility change behaviors a lot to begin with. And that's a starting point.
I agree with that. A lot of the security guards live in the community. And, you know, be here stories, I mean, I put that in the air quotes. Kids cursing out security guards, which to me shows a blatant disrespect for that authority figure. So kind of going back to consequences, what is the consequence for that? Because we're trying to create an environment where the security guards can do their job, which is to keep the kids safe. But with a blatant disregard for that authority, how is that handled?
Yeah, so I would have to defer to my building principals, and maybe that's more of a specific question regarding discipline. But I would imagine, and I don't want to answer for them, but if a student curses at an adult in the building, regardless of their title, if they work there, and there would be a write-up and a consequence for the student, and whatever that consequence would be, would probably be an increased tier depending on how many, when you look at the discipline report before. But that would be my expectation. Whether that's happening or not, I have to speak directly to these guys and see. And that's a part of our plan when we talk about, what Ms. Callahan was talking about, like, reviewing current building discipline and what's being done and what's being implemented and looking at that at the micro level, that's some of the work we're gonna do moving forward.
And I agree, that's what should be happening.
Yes.
I get a feel, and yeah, it's a feel, but that's not happening. And from experience, kids know what they can get away. And they're gonna push that envelope until we get control back of these schools. I don't want to see someone's kid thrown into a glass case.
Agreed.
And that is my big fear, that one of these fights, someone's going to get seriously hurt. There's gonna be an ambulance. And we need to be proactive, not reactive, in this particular situation. Do we engage in hallway sweeps at the middle and high school level?
So we have in the past. I think the middle school, we talked, are you currently doing sweeps or you have? I know that they've occurred at both buildings.
We've done sweeps here, we're.
And we were speaking about.
Trying to get kids in expectation of the homeschool class, where the teacher and then the student will come here and would assign some type of classes.
Do you find that improves children getting to class on time and it minimizes the possibility for problems in the hallway?
Yes.
I think it's more effective in the middle schools. In the high school, we had, you know, I think you were explaining one of your circumstances, Dr. Clomp, where there was over a hundred kids and.
In two thousand fourteen, we implemented hallway sweeps. We had students throw a campaign against hallway sweeps, they had protests in the W. We suspended approximately thirty-two students, I think, as well.
Good for you.
Well, good for me, but a lot of those students, a lot of those students had no other disciplinary interaction previously. And it was the idea of the school. So right now, we are talking with our teachers, you know, having to see about doing some kind of modified sweep. But to be honest with you, you have to look at the data, so Mr. Ashbuck has talked about data here and here before. I constantly am able to handle my students here, including my students. We're very transparent about that. I think a couple interesting points that have been made are that we do have more behaviors, and we are handing out bigger consequences. This year, we're dealing here versus the fall of two thousand eighteen, for sure, which was actually a low rate here. And even compared to two thousand nineteen, the fall of two thousand nineteen, which was a normal fall. I know it seems like a distant memory. Again, those numbers, those numbers don't jump. Speaking of data, when you're talking about doing hallway sweeps, you have to really look across the field. So one piece of data you might want to look at is our parties. And working together with my teachers, we have to look at the number of kids in the hallway and area. We've got this, this is not reactionary, this is not new. And you want to look at the number of kids you observe in the hallway. And when I extrapolate that data across the building, in said comment, in said area, and look at the number of latenesses or parties in the mall. And if they're radically different numbers, you have a problem where you're not taking attendance or marking down parties. So again, I gotta compliment my teachers. I think the biggest issue that we are all having, quite frankly, is that much of our communication, well, about ten percent, ten to fifteen percent of our communication is verbal. And I think that in the environment that we are, I think we are all, teachers, administrators, security guards, central office, parents, I think we are all in some ways languishing. And I think it's very hard to read people, and most communication is non-verbal. It's very hard in the current environment where students are rapt, some of them are wearing hoodies. And we are very much isolated, we're missing some of that connectivity. That is something that we were speaking to, Mr. Ashbuck was speaking out with you, with regard to social-emotional learning programs, and teachers have been doing the homework. Really incredible work, our security guards, I'll say this, I shared this with Mr. Ashbuck today. His security force at the high school is probably the best trained force that he's ever had. He treats kids respectfully. And just that last point that was related previously to Mr. Ashbuck's approach to you. If any adult is reported to a student, a student being disrespectful, it may, Mr. Ashbuck's statement, be advocacy of suspensions. But this kind of a complex could be something like a warning being given by a dean or an assistant principal or myself. That's documented, calls are made, my team at the high school, I'll tell you, really does close the loop. I'm sorry, Dan, over there, I missed your name before.
Mrs. Mulder.
I shared with Mr. Ashbuck earlier today.
This is Naldre.
Naldre.
This is Naldre, Zoika slash Naldre.
I think I answered every email, every single parent that sent me, and I spoke about this with Mr. Ashbuck last week. I didn't leave my desk before five-thirty Friday. Thursday, we were getting some emails, sometimes I was copying Mr. Ashbuck on there because people were emailing all of us. But again, real time, it's really hard to do when we're trying to maintain safety and we're looking to have a crisis response. So I hope I answered.
Yeah, I think one of the things, Mr. Schmidt, you're talking about, and it's not just the feeling I'm hearing from you, but I've heard before, is that the inconsistencies or the feeling tone that some people feel that referrals go nowhere. And it's not the first, like, where a kid may curse at a security guard, and if it's written up, they don't, or it's not written up, they're not writing it up because they feel that nothing gets done. And I've heard that before, and I need to work with my building administration on that to see, is it being written up? And if it's being written up, are there consequences? Because if the kids know that they can curse at an adult in the building and not have a consequence that impacts them, then they're gonna continue to do it. And you talk about the respect level, and I agree with you. So that is something, though, you're not the first person who has said that, that we have to communicate about and talk about when we talk about micro level of discipline in a building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi, Jessica McAllan Mitchell. I have a few questions. So I know that, sorry, how many security guard positions exactly are we going to be hiring? I didn't see any on the website listed.
Yeah, so we didn't post yet, so today's plan, today's action is getting everybody we have on our squad in motion to work.
Just how many numbers, I'm sorry?
Joe, I don't know the number. How many total security guards do we have in the district?
No, no, how many are we hiring?
Oh, we haven't set a number yet, as far as how we'd hire. We're gonna hire as many as we can find, but we have to have conversation, because the conversation has been that the board is looking at, are we not attracting candidates? Because we post habitually, so Mrs. Butler's office does that.
Okay, so by the seventeenth, I don't need, I know I have a few questions, and I only have five minutes, so I don't need to play well, but. By the seventeenth, are we gonna know how many security guards that we are hiring or that we started hiring?
We will have more of a determination of our midterm and long-term plans. And if that's in there, and the amount that we need, and we do an evaluation that we need more, then that would be in there.
We need more, because we only have the same amount of security guards from eleven to two, which seems to be about one of those issues.
Yeah, so I'm going to evaluate that, that's what I'm telling you.
My second question is, I know it was spoken about, SEL was important. SEL especially, I mean, we're having issues in the middle school and high schools. Our elementary school students are having the same issues, and they're just gonna get worse. We have social workers that are splitting schools, we don't even have one social worker per school.
We will shortly.
Okay, and we lost, and now we have, a great nurse, an absolute great nurse.
Yes.
Okay. And an email went to you, and it wasn't responded to.
An email from who? An email from who?
And our staff are being asked to do multiple.
So can I ask you, an email from who?
I believe it came from her.
So an email came from her that you know that I didn't respond to?
Because I was in Florida.
Okay.
Okay, and it was asked that they're being asked to do extra paperwork, obviously, because of COVID. Things are being purchased on their own dime. Why the district isn't paying for it, I don't understand. Why? If we're asking somebody to stay until six o'clock at night to fill out paperwork, either we need to hire another position to help out with that COVID paperwork, or we need to pay them for staying until six o'clock at night. And we lost someone that, here, speaking of SEL, here for our kids, and so here are our kids at the elementary school level. Okay, and we're not, so we're not supporting our younger kids, which is going to just become a problem in the middle school and then a problem in the high school. So I think we need to hire social workers for every elementary school. We need to know how many security guards we're getting, and it shouldn't be next time, this time. If we're having an issue, we need to do it now, not late. We're not exactly proactive, not reactive. Okay, and I come to these meetings all the time. You know who I am? I don't pose problems, but this is getting us made. Because we can't say that we're taking care of them on an SEL level, and we're not. If you have a social worker who is running from school to school, you have a child in crisis, who has a personal relationship with that social worker, but guess what, they're in crisis and having an issue? Social worker's an MGV, because that's her MGV then. You're not helping the child. And we're pushing all of our staff extremely thin. And I know trying to hire people is hard. But right now on our website, we're hiring parents, and one permit's up, that's all we have up there listed. So either we need to put more postings up, and we need to figure it out, because it's going to become a bigger issue. We need to be proactive.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question after our question. Do we have an alternative high school?
Yes, it's called RISE.
Okay, and how do students, so we're talking about the discipline issues and the fighting, can students who have a track record of discipline, are they eligible for that alternative high school?
Yeah, so there's criteria for that, but yes, there is eligibility for that if they need an alternative environment that fits their needs better, yeah.
So if they can't be told official classes instead because of whatever issues they may face, and they are lashing out the caterer league, then we have a safe place to put them while keeping our students safe.
Yeah, we have a suspension school even within the RISE program.
Can I ask you how many kids in the RISE program?
So with my understanding and Ms. Vandy, are we at sixteen right now?
We have, we have right now twenty-two.
Who am I looking at? Oh, seventy, twenty-two, thank you, I heard your voice, I just couldn't, I was, twenty-two in our current alternative school.
And where is it housed?
At the high school.
It's in the high school.
Yeah, at night, three-thirty to seven-thirty.
Okay.
Three-fifteen to seven. Three-fifteen to seven forty-five.
Four, three-thirty to seven-thirty.
Is this only high school students, or is this something that middle school students can do also?
It's high school.
High school, oh, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cole?
Yep, hi, and that's five twenty-first street. So the security issue, this isn't a big issue, but it was my intention. The seniors that talk in the lot, is there a reason they're not allowed to enter through the back and have to walk to the front of the school?
I have no idea, that's a good question for Dr. Clomp. So probably.
We already have a guard there, and we try to do that, especially on pleasant weather days in the morning. We do post guard there, but otherwise they do walk around to the other, the other entrance. Because we're checking ID's, it is one of the.
So the guard that's there in the morning can't re-buy the door and check IDs?
The buses are dropping off on the western side, and that's where the posts are. If we have enough staff in the morning, we do open that up, if we know there's a pleasant weather, try to do the same.
I guess it's been a while since they have been going for that door.
Yeah.
And then you said about when you backed with the whole reopening plan. Do you know anything about the senior scholarship night, you talk about one parent? Is it only going to be one parent? Because that would not be right.
I don't know those plans as of now, so it's a, we are modifying and adjusting our plans as we go. I don't know when senior scholarship night is off the top of my head.
May?
May, so there are no definite plans for May right now at all.
Well, moving forward, if things continue the way they do, I just want to kind of bring that up to the board. Please consider one parent really isn't the right.
Where did one parent come from, for an event in May?
Or possibly bringing back.
No, this was a conversation about, like, in elementary schools, coming to like a Thanksgiving feast with one parent and one child. So it has nothing to do with our evening events. We are currently, right now, at two parents per evening event, so.
Okay.
Like at the concert, it was two parents, so that's where we are now for evening events. But I would imagine things would become less restrictive as we continue through May.
All right, and then any word on the senior demo?
Yeah, so I believe we're working on a date.
March ten?
March ten.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello.
I'm Carrie McAllan, can you watch what she drives? Couldn't stay home anymore watching, so I'm sorry, a little bit heated, and I'm trying to try to keep this out of the control. For those of you who don't know me, I sat on that stage for the last nine years representing each and every one of you, and I left them on your own choice. And I left them on your own choice because I felt like the community administration, the board was all becoming divided. And after watching on YouTube tonight, it's evident that there is no camaraderie in this district and this is disgusting. I'm the mom who put it on Facebook about the fights. I'm the mom who said, let's not worry about the masks because the kids are used to it, I'm used to it, I'm a teacher. Let's worry about the SEL of every child, every staff member, every administrator, every Board of Ed member. They're all human. They all have a heart, they all have a brain, and they all have emotions. They might not agree with what you agree with, and you might not agree with what they agree with, but at the end of the day, they put their head on the pillow just like everyone in here. Okay? With that being said, we look at a tree purple, suicide awareness, PS I love you, let's pass upon kindness. And we're all sitting here crucifying seven people who choose on their own time to help our community. A superintendent and his cabinet who are severely underaid and everybody's eyes are over, overaid, doing the best they can in really serious, trying times. Yes, I put on their fights. I put on their fights because my kids are scared to come to school. My son has not been to school since the middle of November. It's disgusting. It's awful. But it's not any of their faults. It's not the building principal's fault. It's not the security guard's fault. It's not the teachers in the hallway's fault who aren't monitoring their duty. It goes back to us, the parents, who are not teaching their children how to be kind, how to be respectful, how to treat one another in society. Don't put the blame on these people who are trying to look after our children, who are trying to do us good. Let's sit back and say, how can we change this community? How can we go back to the times Matt Riccielli, Heather Rowland, when we were pulling our kids in wagons, passing our flyers, Bob Shy, to pass a budget for the second time, Evelyn, after we were in austerity, almost facing austerity, okay? That was true and betrayed. That was bulldog blue. This is disgusting. None of you should have to deal with what you dealt with, the accusations, the remarks, the sarcasm. You know what, Mr. Eschbach, you're one person in a 3,500-plus children community, not to mention the number of parents, elderly, that you have to respond to every day. So if you don't get back to an email in 24, 48 hours, I don't blame you. I don't doubt you. I know that you had COVID. I know that you were home for 10 days working from your house. I respect that. Teresa, I know you're in a hospital. You're an NYPD officer. You are hurt on the job. You weren't home in your house for over a month. And yet you still responded to emails. I respect you for that. We need to refocus, regain our attention, and work as a community to fight this battle. It's not his fault. It's not your fault as a president. It's not your fault. It's all of our problem. It's our children's problem. When your kids wake up and say, Mom, I'm scared to go to school, that's all of our problem. And instead of sitting here pointing fingers, who didn't answer an email, who did this? How about we come together? How about we come up with a plan that we all can pass along? And get the message out there that this is not tolerable, this will not be tolerated, this is not acceptable, this is not what our children deserve, and let's move on from here. That was what my Facebook post was all about, because everyone was all heist about the masks. The masks is the least of our worries. Our children, our third graders right now, have not been in a routine schedule since kindergarten. I teach third grade. Their handwriting is atrocious. They have not learned how to handwrite. They cannot read. They've been on their computer for one and a half years. It was two years of their life. My 11th grade daughter, my ninth, ninth grade son have not had two years of their life in education. They can't go to a concert. They can't go to a festival. They can't go to a football game. Now, why do all these kids are so angry? When I sat on that stage and the Board of Ed member, there was one particular Board of Ed member that was so pro SEL, SEL, we have to get this, we have to get that, and I was like, oh my God, this is ridiculous. But she was right. We need this. Our children need this. And our district invested in it. We took the ruler approach. We did this, we did that, and all of a sudden it's out the wayside. And I'm not blaming our teachers. I am a teacher. It's not easy. Every teacher cannot wait to retire. How sad is that? I'm none of them. The times have changed. Administration in this district is understaffed. Board of Ed is overworked. The parents are stressed out and the children hate their lives. If you guys, nine out of 10 children in this auditorium tonight, I don't want to go to school, I hate school, school sucks. That's so sad. So let's not sit here and point fingers, please. And I, I couldn't sit home any longer. I got her in my car because she's supposed to be keeping him in control, but she's not. And this, come up with a plan. Can we please work together? What can we do? What activities can we add? What clubs can we reinforce? Instead of a teacher teaching chemistry for 90 minutes in a documentary class, I'll spend 20 of those minutes on a ruler approach. Where are you today? Why do you feel that way? How can we get you out of that zone? What can I do to alleviate your stress? I'm sorry, I've been vague in these meetings, but I couldn't sit home anymore tonight. Mr. Eschbach, you've done the best you can. Your cabinet, you're working far beyond your, your hours and what you're paid to wait for. I don't care who is likely at this segment. Board of Ed, I thank you. I know what it is to be in your shoes and the hours you put in and the time you give your family and the community. I ask that we direct our focus and get off this soapbox and get on a different one. You want to talk about being proactive? This is proactive. Right now, what I've been hearing up until now, it's all been reactive. And I'm sorry, I started it. I put it on Facebook. I didn't think it was going to get to this. But please, all I ask is that in light of that purple tree, in light of kindness, suicide awareness, and everything else, your words hurt people. These are all human beings. We're going to go home tonight, poke their head on the pillow, and your words are hurtful. Your thoughts and your feelings are valid, but we must make a difference and not make accusations. I'm sorry, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jerry.
You know, Jerry, I'm writing all that stuff. And you know what? We do care. And if there's a problem, and we're going to solve that problem. But you know what the problem is also? Like she said, the parents. You've got to help maybe parents be parents. You see these kids in the Phelps Lane Park, 1 o'clock in the morning, they're fighting. See that, call a parent up and say, hey, little kid Johnny, what's he doing out there? Maybe they need a little help and assistance. Deer Park Avenue, I'm biceps cutting cars off. So I mean, Sunset City is full of them. I'm not talking now, I'm speaking to everybody out there. We're on camera out here.
Johnny won't be there.
So if we see these, we see these kids, maybe give their parents a call. Hey, do you know where your son is or your daughter is? Sunset City is a mob. It's a grande shopping center. 3:00 in the morning, man. That's absurd. You know, you drive by, if I see your kid, hey, what are you doing here? Get home, I'm going to tell your mother, I'm going to call your mother. Maybe we all have to work as a community for that. Because it's not only here, it's out there. Like Jerry, this is our community. We have to take it back. And you know what? It's hard being a parent today, I'm sure. You know, I have a granddad, I got grandkids, but I spoil them and that's something different, but being a parent, I can understand how hard it is. But you know, maybe just take a step back and say, what can I do better? How can I help my kid? How can I help my neighbor's kid? Okay, and we all just pull together like she says, and I think we can conquer the world with that. All right, that's all. Like I said, I'm short to the point and I'm rough. I'm sorry.
I'm very gentle. I'm very gentle.
Thank you.
I got a grade too, Dan.
Sorry, I just want to say my comments will not directly affect the board. All right? I just want to let that go. Okay?
Got you. Anyone else? Again, the passion is here from everyone, obviously. That's the most important thing. That we do focus our energies to the good. Jerry, I did bring up PS I love you day, which is an amazing thing that happens in our district and other districts. Uh, it's a wonderful time. You know, Jeff brought up, um, uh, Challenge Day. Again, as being someone who helped bring that to the district amongst many other people, that's a passion of mine. And it really hurts that it's not here. I think some of those things that we have to get back to, again, not blaming the pandemic. But the pandemic causes them not to have these things. We have to look beyond that now. I think many of us are ready to step in and to do the things proactive is the way to go. So we, we hear you? Somebody else out there? Go ahead.
Hi, I have a question for all. My, um, my daughter goes in the district, hasn't just yet, but she will be. Um, I'm a, I'm a mother to special children. And I just wanted to just go back to, I didn't see the video, so I don't know. I didn't see all, I didn't see everything. But I'm just wondering, I think I heard from somebody that the kid that got beat up was special needs. I'm not sure if that's true or not. But I was just wondering, when they are transitioning from classroom to classroom, especially, and no kid, obviously, there's this break that you guys are going to be putting more people in hallways. I love that idea. I feel like, even though no kid should be beat up, I feel like the special needs kids should have either an aide or a parent or somebody. And if they're higher functioning, I understand they might feel a little embarrassed to have an aide walk directly maybe with them. But maybe have some, have maybe or somebody, a couple of kids back, like just keep an eye. Because I feel like that could have been stopped before it even started. Because if somebody had eyes on them, even just the last teacher that was, you know, one of the parents, I don't know how it works if that's what happened, but if that's what happened, if there was eyes on them, I just feel like it could have been like, oh, you know, sorry that he's, you know, you want to try to start with any special needs. Because I, you know, it's difficult when there's special needs. They don't know, you know what I mean? So sometimes a child might start beating them up or doing something to them, and they don't know, you know what I mean? So if that's what happened, then that's what I was wondering. And then also I have one more thing I was wondering about. The punishment for the children. I'm not sure if I heard correctly that the whole party's got suspended from school. So I don't know if the kid that got beat up, did he get suspended also? Because that sounds a little crazy. But the other thing I'm thinking is, you know, besides suspensions, these kids have already been like locked at their house and sometimes they have parents that work a lot. So suspending that outside of school is really just kind of, you know, for some of these kids, they're just at home playing their video games. It's not really a punishment. So do you guys do in-school suspension? Because when I went to high school, we had in-school suspension for doing something stupid. We have to sit in school with teachers that would take shifts and we're there all day and then an after-school detention followed it. So you're stuck in the classroom all day long, no other kids with you. You know, and that's kind of, I feel like more of a punishment than sending them home to play video games. So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, so we have in-school and out-of-school suspension. The ideology behind out-of-school is it's for those most egregious, like really terrible behaviors that are unacceptable in school. And that's where kind of what Ms. McNamie and Mr. Carol Leo were saying. We depend on parents to appropriately supervise and consequence their children when they're put out of school. The reason they're put out of school is because they impose a danger or an unsafe environment for other kids. Um, some of the lower-level behaviors do get in-school suspension to try to deter anyone going any further than the behavior they've shown. But some of these things that have occurred require an immediate removal from the environment and then a long period of time where counseling, parent supervision, and trying to work with the family to transition back at a later date.
Okay, as far as the special needs kids, are they going to?
If they needed transition services between classes, they would have it on their IP and we would provide it.
Okay.
So I can't speak specifically to the incidents that occurred, but I will say if you were an identified special ed student and that was one of your services, yes, exactly how you described it for a high school kid is how it would occur.
Okay.
That it would be off the shoulder, it would be, you know, kind of fitting in, and then there to interact should something go awry for a student.
Because I'm just worried because I know my kids are going to be coming to school and now I'm hearing all this, and I'm like, oh my God. I've been listening since the beginning on YouTube. I know I showed up.
So not everything you're hearing is accurate, and I can't speak specifically to, because the video is in the privacy of the student.
Right.
Um, but not all of that is accurate.
Not all of that is accurate, okay.
Can I, one other quick question?
Sure.
Both the middle school and the high school have in-school suspension room?
Yes.
Do, um, the PDS staff at all check in with those students while they're serving in in-school suspension?
Quick question, you got it all set up. Tomorrow, the officer that was sent to the classroom, are students allowed to wear that sweater and t-shirts? What's that?
Let it be answered because that factor is in suspension as well.
What's that if you can?
So I believe that there was some messaging about wearing blue to school um, in support of the officers. Some, one of the administrators asked me about wearing blue. And I said, of course, kids and staff could wear blue to work.
But they could wear something saying back to blue?
That, I would say, you know, you have to be careful on what's aligning to political points of views and maybe how some other races may view that, um.
Like, do they wear other political things on their masks to school?
So realistically, what I saw, what people want to do, and the post that I saw that's going around the town of Babylon is wear blue. I'm not going to comment specifically right now on a hypothetical of someone who were to wear that the blue or whatever that is. What I know that I was asked about was, would I have a problem with people wearing blue to school to support the officers? And I've said, of course not. I mean, that's a, you know, we all are in support of that, you know, terrible circumstance. And I'm not going to get in a political debate of Blue Lives Matter versus Black Lives Matter and how different cultures or races you live.
But Black Lives Matter is worn in high school. So I just want to make sure.
This is why I'm not having the conversation. So my answer is, if you want to wear it.
And I would like to thank the teachers that, that actually supported that last week in honor of Officer Rivera's parole, that they wore the back to the center. I personally, as a person, I'm very proud of that person. And as a result, I would like to thank you. Um, I, I, I'm sorry that you think that, that any way that it came from us to take that picture down. I personally shared it because I was very proud of Montebabylon because Montebabylon does have a large majority of law enforcement. In regards to tomorrow, I do know there's a lot of districts that are supporting that back to the thing.
I just want to make sure I don't get a phone call.
Babylon, yes, Babylon.
It doesn't say back to blue. I, I see the post, it says, wear blue to.
Okay, so, so.
Wear blue to, to school tomorrow to support the, I've seen the post. So it doesn't say wear back to blue.
He can do that, but I would like to say, as, as in the position that I'm in, that I thank any and all of you that supported that last week in honor of Detective Rivera and that supported tomorrow in honor of Officer Moore that were ambushed to be NYPD. And I thank you personally. Now regarding the back to blue, apparently it's a political issue, so I'll just stay out.
But I just want to make sure I don't get a phone call, or like I said, somebody gave him a shirt. I'm like, I don't know, he's a little honestly afraid to wear it, which he shouldn't be.
Should be.
But I said, well, don't they wear Black Lives Matter masks in school and shirts? And he said, yes. So I just wondered.
Well, I'm wearing back to blue shirt tomorrow, so.
Why is it? I don't look at it, I don't view it as political, that's why I'm asking.
Well, back to blue, Black Lives Matter is two different things, because Blue Lives Matter takes on a different tone than back to blue for the reason that people think it was done in retaliation for the Black Lives Matter. But back to blue, I don't believe has any political stance, besides having you stand behind law enforcement, which well, I became common.
Just going to take that, one last question.
Yes, sorry, um, I forgot to ask one more. Do you guys have any, any kind of policy in place for cell phones in the school? I'm only asking because I feel like for the children that stood around and filmed it, I just feel like if there wasn't cell phones, maybe one of the kids would have went off and gotten an adult, like any adult, to help with the situation of the fighting instead of filming it. I feel like a lot of kids are just so like interested in being photographers now. They want to get everything for their Snapchat or whatever. And I'm not saying they should get in trouble for that or should not.
Well, there were consequences that went along with those who take out their phones to video that.
Yeah.
That's not a permissible use of a cellphone, but we do allow them because they do become sometimes educational tools or something that in lunch, now that lunch is different. That, so I know that, and I'm not, I'm not speaking exactly for each building, but you know, those phones are something that almost every person in the world currently has. And we kind of say, use it for appropriate uses in school and it's an acceptable use policy, but you can't use it for things that would encourage or, you know, poor behavior.
Yeah, and even their locker.
Video recording. No, so I think they carry, sometimes teachers give uh, points. If you put it in the basket for the period, you get an extra point on your participation. Some people just say, keep it away. So there are different, you know, really, it would only be used for educational purposes or an emergency. Sometimes students need to call for an emergency and I would never want a walker, somebody who walks a distant home or has to walk from a bus stop, not to have a device to contact their parent should they have an emergency anytime outside of our school.
Right, after school.
So it's kind of a way during the time unless the teacher says, take it out. But videoing and sharing on Snapchat and these horrific things is not an appropriate use of that.
Okay.
Yes.
I will, I will add to that though. Unfortunately, in our current situation of not having cameras everywhere, that fight could have never been seen. Thankfully, we did see it so we can address it. So there are goods and good bads of having cell phones. Uh, I'm happy that this one was recorded, even if it's a consequence on the kid who did record it, because that needed to be seen, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
So with that being said, I'm going to. So with that being said, I'm going to, um, head on out. Please be safe going home. Thank you for tonight. Uh, the motion to.
Motion.
Second.